Ready? Good evening, the Charter Township of Plymouth Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, October 9th, 2018 will come to order. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Heitman.
Here.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Here.
Trustee Dempsey.
Present.
Clerk Vorva, here. Trustee Kermy.
Here.
Treasurer Clinton.
Here.
Supervisor Heisey.
Here.
All present, we have a call.
Thank you. Item B is the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. How about Fire Chief Dan Phillips?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next also is a proclamation for Fire Prevention Week to be accepted by Chief Dan Phillips. Chief, could you come on down, please? Chief? Chief? Come on down, it's Fire Prevention Week, and we have a proclamation for you.
Sorry, last thing. Public safety.
Well, we will not be reading this in its entirety, but public safety in Fire Prevention Week kicked off October 7th and runs through October 13th. You know, Chief, last night, we had a homeowners' association meeting, and you talked quite eloquently about the history of Fire Prevention Week, and I'd like you to maybe give a shorter version of how you explained it last time. And also, I believe we have the Fire Station Open House this Saturday, so tell us a little bit about that as well.
Thank you very much. Yes, the Great Chicago Fire happened a long time ago, on October 8th, which is what we -- that commemorates Fire Safety Week, is recognition of the Great Chicago Fire. Now, one thing that most people don't know is the Great Chicago Fire was not the largest fire that day, back then. There was a fire in Michigan that was just as large, but there was also a fire in Pesteagio, Wisconsin, that killed almost 2,000 people, limited like three or four towns off the map. The firestorm was so large that it would suck the oxygen out of an area, and people and cattle and animals would die from just oxygen deprivation. So that was -- those were two larger fires than the Great Chicago Fire, but we remember the Great Chicago Fire because Chicago burned to the ground.
There you go. And tell us a little bit about Fire.
So the Fire Safety Open House is going to be this weekend, Saturday, at Fire Station One, right here, 9911 North Hagerty Road. We are going to have some displays, some static displays, you can learn how to use a fire extinguisher safely and properly and put out a real fire. We're going to have a demonstration on how to put out a stove fire. We're also going to have a demonstration on how we use the jaws of life, some of our newer equipment. We hope, I have not got it confirmed, that the Coast Guard will be flying in with one of their new helicopters. They have not confirmed it with me yet, but it'll go from 10:00 to 2:00 at Fire Station One, so please bring your grandkids, come on by, and look at what we have.
Thank you very much, Chief, and thanks for everything that you and your staff do for us every day. Next up is Item C, Approval of the Agenda for Tonight.
Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move for the approval of the Tuesday, October 9th, 2018 Agenda.
Thank you. Motion has been made, is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Dempsey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next up is Item D, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Comments or questions by the board?
Mr. Supervisor, a question on approval of township bills, Item D3. I'm concerned again on Wade trim operations. We have a line item in here for $13,965. I want to make sure that, because we had an issue with the manhole adjustment contract, that Wade trim is not going to get their full agreed-upon price without, you know, because we had to start all over again, and I don't want to pay these guys twice.
Well, we will not be paying them twice, and they have made adjustments to their original contract amount as a result of the earlier problems that we had. The good news is, the project, the manhole uncovering project, is now substantially complete. As of today, I think we're down to about 20 manholes that need to be upgraded, and most of those are in hard-to-reach rural areas, forested areas, that are really not in any residential location.
This new company must have done an outstanding job.
We've been very pleased with their performance.
Good.
Any other questions on Item D?
So I got the bills, I'm almost through them. Two more to go, they all look good.
So far, so good. Jack, do you have any comments on the MDOT email? I know you had requested that be put into the agenda regarding McLump.
I just thought it would be useful to have that document displayed on the public record, so that people who are concerned about the safety at the intersection of Ann Arbor Road and McLumpford Road could see what MDOT's explanation is of what they did and why they didn't do anything else, so.
Do we know?
D2.
Is that why the traffic counter devices are out now?
I don't know if that's the reason, but traffic counters are out along Ann Arbor Road, and this is now the second time that I have seen them in the last probably three weeks. So I'm, I don't know for sure who's behind it, but it's a hopeful sign that somebody is taking some traffic measurements.
Well, the good news is, they go all the way back to the other side of Ann Arbor Trail and go past, way past McLump, almost to Sheldon, so that's good news.
All set, Bob? All right, so I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Heitman.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Motion's made by Trustee Heitman, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Clerk Vorva. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is Item E, Public Comments and Questions. Tonight, we have several opportunities for public comment. We have opportunities at the beginning of the meeting. We also have another opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting, and also we encourage questions on the individual agenda items, as long as they are relevant to the particular agenda item at hand. So at this time, if anybody has any public comments or questions, please limit them to three minutes. Anybody interested? We'll need your name for the record, too, please.
Hi, my name is Mary Wydell. I am a 12-year resident of Plymouth Township, and my husband and I are raising two children here and care greatly about the community. We even took our children, ages seven and nine, to the township's golf course last week and completed 11 holes of golf with them, which they thoroughly enjoyed. There's a lot to be concerned about within Plymouth Township, and one of the biggest efforts of the Township Board was to put on our ballot in November a millage for building an 800-seat theater in the city of Plymouth on the PARC site. This millage, if passed, will take $1.3 million from township residents the first year and even higher amounts after that. The total will be nearly $30 million over 20 years, and the township will have no ownership or equity. Also of concern is how raising taxes 20% for this theater will impact low-income and fixed-income families within Plymouth Township. In addition, Canton's 400-seat theater has operated with a $2 million loss over the last five years. In a 2016 survey of more than 1,300 residents responding, it was found that 60% of residents were not at all interested in an 800-seat orchestra hall. The majority of residents were interested in adding or expanding recreation for these items: playgrounds, picnic facilities, natural open areas, walking running trails, biking trails, canoe and kayak access, sprayscapes, swimming, workout stations, and ice skating. So I'm asking myself, when looking at this information, why did the board vote to put this recreation authority on our ballot, and when it's for something the majority of Plymouth residents didn't want and for nothing that was stated as desired by us? The answer to me has been becoming more clear every day. Members of this board already had an involvement in the PARC. Trustee Dempsey asked to be excused from voting on putting this millage out, as his job has connections to it, very respectable. But Trustee Dorchevitz, who was a founder of Park.
Three minutes.
Had not.
We're getting there.
Had significant involvement in it, and did not excuse himself on the vote. Trustee Dorchevitz's wife also worked at the park as recent as last year. I also wonder where everyone's campaign contributions came from, as there appears to be such a strong push from board members to work on a millage for a new theater when it was not what the residents said they were interested in. Today, we get to see a presentation on options to reshape the township's golf course, including new recreational activities that are actually what residents wanted to see. This is where our $30 million should be invested, not building a theater that we did not want. This is what will improve our community, build value in township properties, and build a place where our community can come together for free, open space recreation activities.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Alrighty, thank you very much. Next up is Item F1, the appointment of Donna Broderick to the Plymouth Township Board of Review. I think Donna's here tonight as well, in case anybody has any questions, but we're not looking for speeches or inquiry or anything like that, so don't worry about that. Any other questions or comments on the appointment?
Yes.
Mr. Kermy.
How many applicants did we have, and will Mrs. Broderick stand up, so at least we know who she is?
Sure. Donna, if you could come to the podium, that would be probably appropriate. And we have received, you know, we have a new policy for boards and commissions that we adopted, so we get, we receive applications regularly from individuals who are interested in one or more of our boards and commissions. So this was, the Board of Review was one of those entities that Ms. Broderick had expressed an interest in, and we thought would be a good fit. I mean, I thought it would be a good recommendation to you, and I would appreciate your consideration.
And when will, when will she take the training?
She will take the training as soon as we can arrange it. There is training from the Treasury, State Treasury in Lansing that you have to attend, but she does need to take office immediately because the individual who she is replacing has moved out of the community.
So the next Board of Review meeting, have we already had the October meeting? There is no meeting until December?
No, there's no meeting until December, but we want to get her up and running and ready for that, for that winter board meeting. Okay. Any questions or comments from the board, from the public? And then I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Heitman.
I move to appoint Ms. Donna Broderick to the Plymouth Township Board of Review for a term ending December 31st, 2020.
Thank you. Motion made by Trustee Heitman, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Dempsey. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Motion has passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next is Item F2, this is a public hearing for the local governing body approval of a Class C liquor license for Victory Hockey LLC. As this is a public hearing, I will need a motion to go, to open the public hearing and a roll call.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move that we open a public meeting to hold a public hearing for the local governing body approval of a Class C liquor license.
Okay, a motion's been made to open a public hearing for the local governing body approval of a Class C liquor license, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Heitman. Mr. Clerk, please take your roll.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Treasurer Vorva, yes. Motion passed.
Thank you. It is 7:14, and we're now in a public hearing on the Class C liquor license for Victory Hockey LLC. Is there anybody here from Victory, Victory Hockey? Could you please come forward? So we'll need your names, and just tell us who you are representing tonight.
I'm Bill Smith, I represent the arena and the hockey program at Victory Honda.
Good evening, my name is Roger Olson, I'm the Chief Operating Officer of Victory Automotive Group, which provides management and other support to Victory Hockey.
Okay, tell us a little bit about yourselves and what the liquor license is going to be needed for in your operation.
Well, I've been involved with the facility since it opened 25 years ago, and recently we've had a renovation over there of a $3 million, and we put an upstairs on it, and this is something that our customers have asked for with the new renovation. The Victory Automotive Group has been generous enough to provide this for the community. We service 200 players, another 200 parents which come in on a weekly basis, and then we, our program is across the country, of which 50% of the facilities that we travel to have beer wine license, liquor licenses in their facility. So we keep getting questions from our people that we service, why can't you guys get a beer wine license? And when we opened the new building, it was perfect for us.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Yes, I have several, but we have some time. What class of hockey is it, and who else is in the league?
You have teams from the east coast to the west coast, from Boston to LA, Anaheim, Colorado, Dallas. We're a Tier One program, which are only eight in Michigan, and we have to apply for that status yearly. We've been involved in this for 15 years. We currently have 10 players playing in the NHL, another 50 to 60 players right now that are playing college hockey, we have four on the Michigan roster right now, we have a couple at Michigan Tech, a couple at Michigan State, so very, very high-end hockey.
It's called Tier One, or is it AAA? Okay.
It's called Tier One. There's categories of hockey and youth hockey, Tier One being the highest level that you can go before you go into the junior ranks and then into the college ranks.
So what is the age group?
They run from nine to 18.
All right. Next is, who owns the facility?
The owners are Michael Capo, who is with Victory Automotive Group, and Eric Capo, who is also with Victory Automotive Group. They are the sole owners of.
So they're the owner of the dealership group?
They are.
They're the ownership of Victory Honda LLC, Victory Hockey.
Say again, get closer, please.
Yeah, sorry, so Michael Capo, Eric Capo are the owners of Victory Hockey LLC, which is the entity that owns the rink itself. We also have a nonprofit entity that operates the teams and the leagues, that's a kind of corollary entity.
And where will the drinking establishment be, on second floor or on first floor?
Yes, I walked it, I walked the building with the fire marshal a week ago, he had to come through and do a status of the building, and I asked him his recommendations, and he told us the upstairs would be perfect for this, we would solely have the alcohol upstairs, we would contain it upstairs. We don't have anybody under the age of 18 working at the facility. Everybody that works there is generally retired or older, older people that can control something like this. It would be locked at times when it's not open, we would put something, a facility in there to make sure everything was locked, so it wasn't open to the public.
So this is a new liquor license, it's not the legacy from when it was Plymouth Bowl, which had a liquor license?
No, no, the Plymouth Bowl was never taken over, you're right. It was never taken over by the previous owner.
So it's a new liquor license based on the quota system, so you didn't have to purchase it, it came from the.
No, we didn't.
It came from the state allocation.
Correct.
All right.
I thought you had it relocated someplace, right?
Pardon?
They did not have to purchase it?
No.
Don't you have to relocate it?
No, it's, 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 it's one that's open, we.
It's the new quota system.
The new quota, if we have a quota, we could have 18, 17 are used, and this is the last one that's available.
It's based on population?
That's correct.
And we don't really have much say over it? It's the State Liquor Control Commission that.
Yeah, this is just saying, we approve this, and then it goes to the Liquor Control Commission, who has the final say on all of this. We just have to make sure that the building codes are met, and the fire marshal inspects it and designates how many people are in the capacity for that area, and he's designated, I think, 250, and then says that they can only have the alcohol upstairs, away from the rink.
Say again, 250, what?
Two, 250.
250 people?
Right.
Occupancy.
In the building?
Yes.
That's a pretty big building.
Yes.
I didn't know that. So.
That's why the city of Plymouth has some proliferation of.
Because they don't have to purchase the license, and someone else had.
And someone, they may have to, or may voluntarily buy it because it's in an existing establishment. That's happened a couple times where there's been transfers because it's where they want it to be already.
It's kind of a state giveaway compared to the old days, because you would have to pay $25,000 to $100,000 for one.
Absolutely.
Correct.
This is free, except for the attorney fees and other licensing fees.
And meeting whatever requirements the LLC puts on them.
Yeah.
But this is a wonderful opportunity where they've taken this facility and enhanced it and spent money, and it's a, it's something that in the general region is used by people in all the Midwest.
Any other questions from the board? At this time, are there any questions or comments from the public? Yes, you're going to have to come up to the podium, too, I'm sorry, because we can't hear you from.
By the way, I'm glad you guys showed up, many times people don't show up.
We're glad to be here.
Will this facility be open to the general public?
Yes.
As well, besides the hockey, at all times?
No, this is, this is a hockey facility, so whenever there's hockey being played.
And we also have open seats available to the public.
Right.
Well, you're open almost 24 hours a day for hockey, right? No?
I wish, I wish that were true. Our main tenants for the rink are basically, high school starts about 3:00, and it goes to 11:00, 11:30 at night during the weeknights, and then we do have some drop-in hockey during the day for, we offer it up for lunchtime, and then on the weekends, generally go from about 8:00 in the morning until about 11 o'clock at night, both Saturday and Sunday.
Oh, I thought there was a shortage of ice, and people were complaining they couldn't get ice, but that must be a 40-year-old data.
There's a shortage of ice, but everybody wants it between about 3:00 and 4:00.
That's right.
Yeah, just in the afternoon, yeah.
Any other questions from the board or the public? Very good, thank you, gentlemen. At this time, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move for the closing of the meeting.
The public hearing motion made by Clerk Vorva, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Heitman. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll to close the public hearing.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Motion is closed.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed at 7:23. Next is Item F3, this is the new Class C liquor license for Victory Hockey.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
We've, we've held the meeting, and it was publicly noticed, and now we need to give a, what's called a local governing body approval to this endeavor, and this, of course, is submitted to the LLC with all the other requirements that are required by the LLC from the, from the owners, and so we need a motion to approve this resolution.
Thank you, the motion, are you making that motion?
I will make the motion.
So Clerk Vorva has made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Do we have language surrounding the motion?
Yes, I move to approve, let me read the motion. I move to approve Resolution 2018-100980 recommending that Victory Honda, Victory Honda, sorry, Victory Hockey LLC applications for a Class C liquor license be approved by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission.
Thank you, the motion's been made by Clerk Vorva, is there a second?
I did. I seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Kermy. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Good luck. Next is Item 4, this is the appointment of Trustee Gary Heitman as the Board Representative to the Zoning Board of Appeals. The cover memo is pretty self-explanatory. Any questions or comments by the board? Need a motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
Motion's been made by Trustee Dempsey, is there a second?
Let me, I'll read it, too.
Well, you want to read it?
Sure.
Well, okay, go ahead.
I move to appoint Trustee Gary Heitman as the Board Representative to the Plymouth Township Zoning Board of Appeals for the unexpired term ending November 20, 2020.
Thank you, motion's been made by Trustee Dempsey, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Treasurer Clinton, Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
I recuse myself.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
No.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey. Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Motion carries. Clumsy.
Did you get that? You got, you got the vote tall?
I got it.
All right. Item 5 is the Picnic Basket Market Stormwater Agreement, Mr. Richmond.
Thank you, Supervisor. This stormwater agreement is for the picnic basket marketplace. As you may recall from our previous storm drain agreements, as part of the permitting process with Wayne County, the township is required to take jurisdiction over the storm, stormwater system. This storm drain agreement passes the responsibility of maintenance on to the owner. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments by the board?
Who has the responsibility to ensure that this is recorded with the Register of Deeds?
That is our responsibility.
Our being.
I take, I take.
Your engineering firm handles it? All right, so they are, they are being, we're having a lot, so we want to make sure that they're recorded properly.
Yep.
Thanks.
Any more questions or comments by the board or the public at this time? I am looking for a motion.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move to adopt Resolution 2018-100982, authorize the township supervisor to sign the Wayne County Permit M48831, and approve the storm drain agreement with Elite Property Companies, Inc., and authorize the township supervisor and clerk to execute the same.
Motion has been made by Clerk Vorva, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Heitman, Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton. I'm sorry.
You forgot me, Kermy.
Kermy, thank you.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next is Item 6, this is a presentation of the draft master plan for Hilltop Golf Course. We have Paul Albanese here, where is Paul? Here he is. And we do have your map up on the screen. I don't, we don't?
Do you want, yeah, does it run, do you want me to drive?
So while they're getting set up, I'll just provide a little bit of background. Paul Albanese is a renowned, well-respected, international golf course designer and developer. We're fortunate that he lives in the city of Plymouth, and we were able to secure his services over the summer at a very, a very reduced rate, which we certainly appreciate. The development of a golf course master plan was one of the recommendations of the Volunteer Golf Course Committee, which was formed earlier this year. And the Golf Course Committee looked at a variety of elements of the, of Hilltop Golf Course. And one of them was to find somebody, a professional, who could actually develop a master plan that would assist us in trying to create a vision for the future of the golf course. And so Paul Albanese was recommended and the fact that he's a local guy made it all, all the, the better and easier for us. So tonight, Paul is going to share with us the draft of his master plan. This has gone through a few iterations, even right up until tonight, it looks like. So I'd like Paul, when he's ready, to provide a little bit more background on himself, on the processes that he has undertaken to get us to this point here tonight. And then to walk us through, walk us through the next steps in the, in the process. Good enough? All right, thank you. Do you want to give him a microphone or is he gonna, Paul, you're going to stand up there?
I'll stand up here if you want. Stand wherever you want.
Who's going to control the slides or?
It's just one slide. It's just the master plan itself.
Okay.
Do you have a little, anyone got a pointer thingy?
Uh, no, we.
No pointer thingy?
We had one two weeks ago, but we gave it back to the rightful owner. No, this isn't.
Did you email it, Paul?
I emailed it to you, Bob, yeah?
Yeah.
Mark, Mark, oops.
That'd be great.
Mark has a pointer.
Okay. All right. Welcome.
So if you want to, while Mark's getting that, maybe you can tell us a little bit more about yourself.
I will. Tell you about myself, tell you about the process. Tell you about how exciting a project this is and how unique and innovative I think we can all be as a community to do something that might turn heads not only in our world, the golf world, but the art world and possibly the community type planning world, recreation world. I've been doing this for 25 years. I graduated back in 1990 from Cornell where I got an engineering degree, right side of my brain, learned how to build things. And then I went to Harvard where I got a graduate degree from landscape architecture. Took another three years to learn how to use my left side of my brain, the creative side. So I, I mended those two together, melded them together and created a career out of designing golf courses, which has been a real blessing and takes me around the world. We're doing projects right now in Vietnam and Dominican Republic and I've been to Russia. Been all over the world doing golf courses. And then my friend Andy Maum, who's on the golf course committee here, he's a basketball colleague of mine, saw me at the gym one night and mentioned that Kurt had put a committee together to study Hilltop because Hilltop is a, was suffering economically at a minimum. And I can attest to that myself as a, as a resident. I've been, I've lived here for 25 years. I, I do live in the city. All of that, full disclosure, I live in the city. But I've driven past Hilltop for years with my kids. I'm a golfer, obviously. I've never played it. Would go on to other courses. So that in itself should tell you something, that, that the golf architect who lives in town does not even really know much about the golf course because it's never been, some of that's a marketing thing, some of that's a design thing, some of that's a maintenance thing. There's a lot of reasons. But that's, that's a cue to why Hilltop since, especially since the recession, has been doing like other golf courses have been doing, taking a financial hit, trying to figure out how to survive. And the economics have shown themselves that way, hence the reason Kurt has wisely said, hey, how do we fix this? What's this, what, or what's the problem here? And he asked Andy to get a committee together and Andy, playing basketball with him, said, hey, I think I'm going to propose to, to Kurt that, that we could hire a professional to do this. And you're a professional. Andy had saw one of my courses that won an award in his home state of Nebraska, which was, I was very proud of. And he said, maybe you can do this job. So he introduced me to Kurt. One thing led to another and before I know it, I'm doing a master plan for the golf course that's in my hometown, which I couldn't be more proud of. And I like, and I know for a fact that I'm not doing it for free, but I'm definitely not doing it for fees that, that I've done for international clients. And gladly so. I, I love Plymouth, been here forever and plan to stay forever. So this is a, this is a project close to my heart. One that I'd like to see us all as a community figure out the best way to go about this. I think you'll see from the master plan that although I'm a golf architect, that the plan itself is going to display a, not only a golf bent, if you will, it's going to show a community recreational bent and some unique ideas that I think can happen here that, as I said before, I think might, might be worth exploring. And we are in the exploratory phase still. The master plan process, I think I gave this presentation the first time, or at least once to, to a group of people in the community here about the process. And our belief that the process should be open and transparent and allow input from the community as to what they want. That input by the community has already been given in many ways, in two ways, two specific ways. Two surveys have been done about what you as the community wanted to see in your community. We utilize that as, as the data and the basis for how we would try to incorporate some of these things in here. Now, not everything got done that way and it wasn't done that scientifically, to take the top five, try to put the top five in there. Sometimes you have to, as a designer, look at different aspects of things. But that was definitely a good starting point for what we saw the community's desires as being with the surveys. And then we also had an open house meeting, which I also felt very strong about. The showing to the open house was, was okay. I do wish, I wish there were more people there, but it was done in the middle of the summer, which we knew right off the bat was possibly going to cause some, some lesser crowds to show up. But the people that did show up, we had a lively discussion about how the direction was headed. We got some good feedback from that. And from there, we took it to some really creative and interesting ideas. And the next piece of this came about a little later in the process than I would have liked, but it came about anyway. During the process, there was an opportunity to do something that I had studied back in graduate school 20-something years ago. I'd always been intrigued by the idea of how you can integrate golf and community recreation. If anyone knows Scotland, that's where the game of golf started. And golf courses in the golf, golf in Scotland is an egalitarian democratic sport. It's a landscape that the communities all embrace in Scotland. And it's one, you can see dog walkers walking around a Scottish golf course. It's not just a Scottish golf course, it's a British Open Championship golf course. It's St. Andrews, if anyone is a golfer knows St. Andrews, that's where they play the British Open. And yet on Sundays, they close the golf course and allow community members to walk around their revered greens and bunkers with their dogs. It's, it's an amazing sight to see fantastic golf landscapes being used by non-golfers. And I've always been intrigued by that concept and I've tried to integrate that idea here in the States and many other, in some other projects in some other ways. This was a real opportunity to possibly do that in a way that's, that I have never done before. And one where I think you as a community might be able to actually show this off, if you will, to other communities as an example of how we can take the Scottish concept and precedent of integrating golf with other community recreational aspects in a way that's, that's one to be proud of. So as we were exploring this, we looked at some different amenities that we could put into the, into the golf course site. Of course, you already have 18 holes there and it's kind of crowded, so how do you do that? And one of the ideas that you're about to see is how can, we thought maybe we take out nine holes. And the, the land that we utilize that's left over after taking out nine holes could possibly use for this integration of other aspects, of, of other community recreational amenities. And as we started to do some design development on it, we did notice that you could pretty easily take out the nine holes. And if we can get this up on the screen at some point, I will show you, we're starting to get to the fun part where you'll see these ideas on, in reality. So we looked at the nine holes and we said, you know, there's an opportunity to take out nine, put in some things that the community needs. So let's go to the survey. What does the survey say? Survey said soccer fields and, and not only the survey said that, but there's been another member of the committee, Bob McCurdy who's here, is, represents a lot of the soccer interests. And it's our understanding and through Bob and through the community that there is a dearth of soccer fields in the area. So it seemed to make sense that we could possibly incorporate some soccer. And then something happened, I've always been intrigued by the idea of how can you integrate art with a, with a golf course? And lo and behold, my neighbor Lisa Howard, who is part of the Plymouth Arts Council, she approached me about the project and said that they'd be interested in looking how we might be able to, to have a, have some kind of integration in this project. And I was immediately intrigued by the idea. And unfortunately, it came a little later in the process, but then we ended up sitting down with Don Wakefield, who's here as well from representing the Plymouth Arts Council tonight on behalf of Lisa. And we came up with some really interesting ideas for how the Plymouth Arts Council might be involved in this process and spaces on this site that they might utilize that would help create an art focus as well as a golf focus, as well as a recreational focus. So that's how we got to this spot. Are we getting any luck in, in being able to put a plan up?
The problem is I don't know how to use it back.
Put the other plan up. It's not that much different than what I had and, and I can at least, and I'll tell you exactly what I did.
Get this file onto this, onto the thumb drive and then we can put it on this computer.
Isn't he an IT guy?
Yeah.
One second folks.
You emailed it to the wrong email address and then I tried to send it to the right one.
And you're an IT guy, right?
Um, no.
Oh.
I'm, I'm more of a big picture kind of guy.
I don't want to know.
Okay. Where am I trying to get to the thumb drive?
Yeah, send it to the thumb drive.
No name drive?
Yeah, that's it. No name. This is your pointer, right? All right, so let's, let's get it there. I'll put it on the desktop here and then we'll put the pointer.
It should be on there.
All right, is it on there?
Should be on.
This is pretty cool. You guys will like this.
Yeah, go ahead. Oh, yeah, well, that's, you gotta wait on this one. It's cool. You gotta wait, you gotta wait.
Did you make it easier?
Not only we have a really cool idea for how to do this whole integration thing. I used to call it the onion, actually. That was my concept 25 years ago, like layers of an onion. And that the, and the golf would be in the center or, no, the community would be in the center and the golf would be around it and people would have an opportunity. There we go. And there, and here is what we've, here's the results. And please note preliminary.
Is that the updated one?
It's just Bob!
What?
There we go.
So this is the updated one, not the one that was in the board pack.
Right.
Probably.
Beautiful. You've got a pointer to work with.
Probably.
So notice here, this is preliminary draft. This is not set in stone. The idea is to be able, the design process is one, it's called iteration. We go around and around on this. The open house meeting was helpful. The committee, by the way, deserves your kudos because Bob McCurdy, Andy Maum, Jason Winters is here, Joanne. There's been quite a few people on the committee who've, who've really given some fantastic input. And that is how you create a great design, is through a good teamwork and, and a good leader. I like to think I lead, but I also listen and there's a lot of great input out there. So what we've come up with is a preliminary design that's going to take away nine holes and as I said, create an interior space right here. That the Arts Council has shown an interest in utilizing for their artwork in different ways, shapes and forms. We don't know exactly how yet. And that's part of the, what we want to get out of tonight is are we heading in the right direction? Is the board happy with this direction? And, and the other thing I need to give a caveat here about, because I'm sure it's going to come up, is costs. We have not delved into any of the costs on this yet in any huge way, in any detailed way, because we want to get an idea. Is this, is this an idea that we want to pursue? And once we get an idea, then we can start looking at, at the economic ramifications. In general, the thinking is we get rid of nine holes, you really only have nine greens and nine fairways to take care of now versus 18. And if the golf course is done in a cool enough way, we might actually be able to generate greens fees that are maybe not as much as the existing 18-hole course, but maybe, maybe close. So, you know, do the math, same, same relative amount of income, but less expense. We might be able to make the golf course more economically palatable. At the same time, allowing space for these future projects or, or amenities. And I say future because I know, again, economics will play a role in this. All of these things can be staged in over a period of time based on the economics of how things play out. So what we did is we looked, here's the nine holes and the, the light bulb really went off when we first said, what would happen if we took out nine holes? And instantly it showed that there's kind of a natural nine-hole loop around the edge of the golf course. Let me run you through it. Well, first, it was a natural nine-hole loop, which we said, great, you can cut it to nine and then we got an interior space for amenities. And then we got real creative and said, well, what if we were to actually do this? Make the nine holes each green, there's nine green. But if you play them from different spots each way, you can actually have two golf courses in one. You can play the nine holes differently, the front nine and the back nine. Now, we still have to work out, and Bob is convinced we can do it, that we can do the two different nines on the same day. But the worst-case scenario would be you have nine holes on day one, Saturday, say. And then the next day, the golf course plays as a, as an almost completely different nine hole. So Sunday becomes the red course. And that in itself would allow intrigue for people to say, hey, Saturday, we can play the blue course. Sunday, we can play the red course. There actually may be a way, if I can talk, Bob and I can figure it out, that you can do that all in one day. But anyway, here's the concept. So the first hole's here. These are all existing greens, by the way. We would not have to rebuild, I take that back. We may have to do some remodeling of some greens because they're becoming too slopy. But for the most part, we can utilize the existing green. So this is the first hole. And then you play the second, call this the, the red course. Here's the first hole, second hole, third hole, fourth hole's a par five. Fifth hole would be a par four, sixth hole's a par four, seven, eight, and then nine. And then the next day, or the back nine, you play 10 to the, to the former second green. 10, 11, 12, which is now, you know, playing to the fourth green. 13, it went from a par four to a par three. 14 is now a long par four versus the short par four. 15 is a short, almost drivable par four versus the long par four that it was as hole seven. Eight becomes a dog leg that plays to the existing 17th. And then 18 plays as a dog leg par five versus a long par, a short par four that it was for nine. So it's actually, if you study this, it's a pretty interesting way to utilize nine existing greens and create in many ways 18 golf holes. So that in itself takes care of the golf course. It, and now the other part becomes, what do we want to do with that other space? If, if in fact, the board, and everyone likes the concept of doing that with the golf course, you have extra space to utilize. And, and this is our proposal, is to look at the interior space here being allocated to the, to the art center as well as significant portion of the triangle property over on the south corner. They've expressed interest in these being the best for their art centers. We've looked at soccer fields here. We have, at one point, we had the soccer fields in here along with the art. We did some redesigning. It really does make logistical sense to put some soccer fields here. This would include adding some additional parking, utilizing your already overbuilt parking space, which I think is a great utilization of what you might call a mistake because I know that was built for a larger facility, I believe. And now you can actually justify having it. So that's a, that's kind of a win. There's talk of these buildings. What do we do with these? How do we go about this? There's discussions and, and I think a good proposal for making this a future restaurant and a, and a more significant clubhouse that would service the golf as well as the soccer, as well as any parts of McComber Park. So this could become a restaurant if you wanted to lease it out or however we looked at this piece of property here. You have an existing clubhouse here. What do we do with that? Well, we started to talk to the art people and maybe if they're not ready to do their whole, whole big deal in the beginning, it becomes temporary for them and/or it becomes temporary for the golf. If you don't want to go down the road immediately of doing this. So there's a lot of options to phase this type of thing in. Something that I thought was important, we worked on literally just this morning, this is the difference between this plan and that plan, is I, I think it would be nice to have some kind of connection between the, if this is in fact the art center at some point or some significant meeting spot, that there'd be a connection between these two in a, in a very formal and nicely landscaped way. Again, this is the art area that came about after I met with Lisa Howard and realized there was an opportunity here. And then we met with Don Wakefield and we had some really good discussions about this. And in fact, I would ask to allow Don to come on and talk a little bit about the art piece of this, so allow. Because Don's very passionate about art and I think there's an opportunity here to integrate these things. Don, if you'd like to come on up or you, the board, you guys are okay with that, I hope.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Well, are there any questions?
Have you? You're aware that the son of Norman Rockwell, Peter Rockwell, did sculptures for Plymouth Township.
Right.
Some are in storage and some are, I don't know if any are out there now, but they've been stored, they were from the 1980s.
Right. Most of them are still out there. They're in the playground over by the, the ADA playground. And there's, most of them are still there. Couple of them had to be removed because they were cracked or they were presented a hazard to the kids. There were a couple others that were mounted on metal rods and they, they were removed. The metal rods remained, so we had to cut those down. So the remaining sculptures to the, are in storage, but most of them are still out there. Just to answer your question, Chuck.
I have a question. Perhaps you could outline in general why you think this would make sense to display art for this community? How would that occur? What would, what would the council be doing to facilitate art here at this park?
Well, the Plymouth Community Arts Council, in case you're not aware, is celebrating their 50th anniversary next year. And so they've had a big.
And so they've had a big impact on the community, um, with, uh, the classes, especially for kids' classes, and, um, and some adult classes, their outreach program in Kelowna Park during the summertime on Wednesdays, and a variety of other classes, uh, in and out of their little building that they have. And that's part of their problem, is they have 3,000 square feet, which coincidentally is the same size as the clubhouse. And so there could be a exchange. They, they would consider potentially selling their properties and moving completely over there and raising funds for a museum. Uh, but the biggest part, the most exciting part of the project, the center part here that we're looking at for potential art, there is an existing pathway that is right about in that exact area that already exists, and you could actually start a sculpture garden pretty quickly. And, uh, I know that's a little more than they've been doing, but they've been looking at ways to increase the arts in the community, uh, through public art and, um, and sculptural projects that bring art, you know, outside to the community, and I think Plymouth is really ready for something like that. It's a great community, it's high-end, uh, and they've got a beautiful opportunity here to expand and bring the arts, you know, right, right to the center.
So like a miniature Meyer Gardens-type concept?
Yeah, a little bit. Like, Myers is much larger, in my opinion, it's totally underused for artwork. There are 22 sculptures there, but they've got like 135 acres.
Yeah.
You know, and it's all spread out, it's a nice walk. This particular pathway is about one mile. And so as Lisa and I have been talking in great detail about how do you bring the biggest benefit to the community, um, and so aside from the art part of it, you have walking clubs in the morning, uh, she's already part of the garden club, and there's a lot of people that would love to be involved and be in part of that garden crew, if you will, you know, to make the place look really beautiful. It needs more flowers, it needs more art, uh, a little more landscaping, but that's one thing that the property has, is it's really incredibly beautiful.
Will you delineate the walkway you're talking about that already exists?
Uh, it's a little hard to see, but it does, if you look at the, um, current, um, clubhouse right there, uh...
The golf clubhouse.
I can't see a clarity out here, but it does go right in the whole center of the property.
So it's a cart path currently?
Cart path, right here.
Alright, so it's a-
That cart path, probably, pretty, right there, you have to change it a little bit, and then you get hooked in right here. See, that's kind of right, there's probably three-quarters of cart path there. That we might be able to redesign and utilize immediately until the final plan gets implemented, and we probably start to utilize that. And I want to say a few things about Don. He's, he was very passionate when we met about this, and I think he's left out a couple things about how, how nice this might be. One, Lisa Howard's been connected to the arts in this region for 25 years, 20, 25 years?
About 20 years.
About 20 years. Very, incredibly connected in this region of art. And the thing that struck me most when Don was talking to me, and I'm, is when he told me that there's nothing in this region that really, that really would speak to art in this way, that it was relatively unique, that there wasn't a lot of competition, if you will, for this type of thing, and there's a lot of demand. According to Lisa, they're blowing out of that building, they're bursting at the seams, looking for places to expand because there's much demand for this art, and yet there's not a lot of places to do it. That, that struck me as a, as a good thing.
Yeah, and as we, Lisa and I were talking about the potential of where they could go, uh, we started looking at different properties in Plymouth and Plymouth Township, and this just happened to come up at a great time. So there's the opportunity, is to look at this a little closer. Uh, you know, we, we are certainly prepared, Lisa, and the Great Lakes Arts Foundation, uh, and a variety of other foundations in and around Metro Detroit would all be on board on this, because it's not like, it's, it's not like a sports team where there's competition from one to the other. If you like going to the DIA, you're gonna like going here, maybe even a little better, I don't know, you know. The DIA, you can't, uh, it's not to, it's not in direct competition because they're really in a encyclopedia museum. We would be focusing on contemporary art and fine art, dealing more with living artists, uh, because they're a lot easier to talk to and deal with. No, but just to, uh, we'd be networking with other institutions to borrow artwork, uh, from collectors and from artists. We really have a really great connection in and around Metro Detroit as well, they have a nice focus on that. But we would ultimately want to bring in art from around the world, just to share it with the community, uh, right here in Plymouth.
So your, your mention of these foundations, does this, um, get to the issue, which is a bit premature, the financial aspect of this, but what's your confidence level that this kind of art, um, plan is, is doable, is fundable?
I'm totally confident, 100%. This is, you've got an organization that's been here for 50 years, and so they, I don't know how many kids have gone through it, but thousands and thousands. Uh, they benefit, about 12,000 kids a year in their outreach program, they have over 100 volunteers just for that program alone. And coming from the outside, because I, I live in Canton, but in looking at different groups in and around Metro Detroit, the Plymouth Community Arts Council is really the strongest for programming by far. Um, and they've got a great track record. So they've got a lot of friends, they've got a lot of supporters, they've got financial support from a lot of businesses in the community that would love to have just a little piece of that pie in there, you know, with their name on it.
As a matter of fact, uh, to the rest of the, the board here, uh, I homeschooled my kids for the first six years, and we went to the Arts Council all the time for classes and, and, and things to enhance their education. So we used it quite extensively.
Yeah, fantastic. And as a matter of fact, we're just right now getting ready to expand their programming into adults' art programming for sculpture classes. Uh, it won't be there, it's going to be in another building in a nearby city, at least temporarily, um, but ultimately, if we could have all of that, you know, shoot for a museum, uh, educational facilities, uh, the sculpture garden, it would, just a fantastic opportunity.
This is, uh, this is very creative. Uh, I applaud both you gentlemen for this. Is there any chance at all anybody goes looking at art and gets hit with a golf ball?
Well, we'll, we'll take that under serious consideration, of course.
I mean, I'm, I'm looking at this path, and I mean, we don't have the greatest golfers, you know. I mean, they're, they're weekend golfers.
And that's the reason golf in, in this, in this country has diverged from Scotland. Because, yes, you know, I'd, I'd be lying to say that there's no chance ever for that to happen, and of course there would be, and there is now. I mean, so there's always a chance, Beck Road, there's a chance, there's always a chance. It's a liability issue. Some architects will shy away from this kind of concept just for fear of that issue. I'm not going to do that, because I think it's worthy of, of this, but there would have to be the, the right amount of professional judgment done when designing it, as well as, as some caveats when you're out on the sculpture garden that they would assume risk, like you do when you go on a golf course, go to a baseball game, so.
Thank you.
So how much would it cost to order a magnitude?
For which part?
Uh, I'm, you know, I guess, for the concept.
But the whole concept, it's hard to itemize and talk to Don about what it would cost to build his pieces. And then the golf course itself, again, I didn't even want to start delving into that, being that I didn't know before you wanted to go down this direction. And as I said, 18 versus nine, we will start doing those numbers, once you guys tell us, do you want us to continue down this road, or do we want to go back to, you know, an 18-hole golf course and show you how we can remodel the golf course for you, if we can compete with the rest of the golf course in this, in this region? Which personally, I think, you know, wouldn't you do that? You'd have to probably spend a, a good bit of money to make the golf course competitive with other facilities.
Oh, how much? I'm sorry, uh, this, this design you have right now for the nine-hole golf course, how many of these fairways, greens and tees are reusable? Another way, how many of these are new?
None of these are the best of beauty. These are all, all nine of these greens that we've built are existing.
The greens are existing, the fairways are existing, the-
Most of the fairways, now, some, some of the unique changes, say, like the ninth hole, we'd have to go cut some trees down here maybe to make this hole playable.
So it's 90% carryover, you'd say?
Uh, that's probably, you know, a little high. I would think more like 75%.
Okay.
When we're, uh, when we're evaluating costs, uh, before and after, um, I caution you to look at the, the fee we charge versus the Groupon rate. That, I mean, it's clear, everybody's playing a course for the Groupon rate, and it's $13 with a cut, you know.
The Groupon golf now, I mean, it hasn't really hurt the golf industry.
Well, and it, I, I truly believe it's hurt Hilltop, you know, just as much as anybody, because, you know, it's really bad.
There's a whole operation on it, and actually, without public bids, and look at other operators, and tools for how to actually address those issues regardless of what goes on.
Good.
My judgment is that we have a plan, and I think this is substantially it, that can be phased over 25 years. It might take-
There you go.
And you, and it would have to be coordinated and compatible, the design, so that you could phase it. Based on as, for example, if the Arts Council had a fundraising campaign to either commission art or adapt the building, the old clubhouse or whatever, as things like that go. Uh, and many times, it takes a long time.
It does. I've been on projects for 10, 15 years.
Yeah, the Annaber Road corridor is an example, that, that was first talked about in 1993, and it took until the mid-2000s to get the, the landscaping done. And we still have the railroad, for example, is the, the centerpiece that everybody wanted to fix.
So the next phase, the next step is you gentlemen, as the representatives here, have to decide, is this the direction we want to go, or do we want to switch directions?
Well, yeah, since you raised that question, if you go, there's one thing in my mind that's, to me, would be a, a big no, and it's off the map there right now, but I do see it on, on my handheld, and that's a, a pool. Um, municipal swimming pools are incredibly expensive, and even more expensive to maintain, and, uh, the liability issues and all of that. If you look around at the few communities that have swimming, outdoor, especially outdoor swimming facilities, um, they're, they're not operational. I mean, they're shutting them down. Um, you know, I, I grew up in Dearborn, and we used to have a municipal swimming pool practically on every corner, and you, you know, I think that there's only one left now. So it's, um, it's a big, it's a big hassle and it's a big expense. So I would probably, if it were up to me, I would say you should scratch out the pool.
Due to the economic, and you know, it's funny, the reason we put the pool in, we, we, more or less, as we were, it was, really wasn't my first thought to do a pool, and it was when we sat down with the committee, trying to be responsible to the survey.
Yeah, that's fine.
If you look at the survey, it said, what, what do people want? They want swimming. So we were like, well, I don't think it's going to make sense at the end of the day, it's probably too expensive, but that's what they want. Let's see how this flows.
No, and that's-
But even at the charrette, at the charrette, we had several people-
Yes.
Make an impassioned appeal for a pool at the charrette in July, I think that was.
So I mean, I guess the, the debate here, the question would be, okay, everyone wants the pool.
He'll tell you what-
Your, your experience tells you they don't work. And I don't personally have, I can't speak to that specifically myself, so how do you make that decision?
Yeah, I mean, and look, we're, this is, this is a, a, an interesting concept, so, I mean, I, I'm giving you some feedback. I don't see an amphitheater there, so that's, that's good.
Or a Fortale sign.
You know, that's all, that's all, that's an old story.
Still got a pavilion, though.
Yeah.
If you go to grasshacks, like, I'd like to leave this meeting today, knowing, do I keep the pool in or take it out?
Well, I mean, I vote to take it out, just, just because I know how much those things are going to cost. I mean, this is still, there's still a lot of cost associated with this, no matter what. Also, can you explain a little bit more about the, the triangle property there and what your vision is for that?
Well, that, again, Don saw that piece as really fitting well in his vision for what he needed. It's like, he, he gravitated for that for his needs. So why don't you describe, sort of, the reason?
Well, I mean, if we're going to think big, um, it, it's a great spot for a museum, and the educational part of the concept, and parking.
Uh, the, the idea of closing off, having the new entrance, Paul, that was, that was part of your architectural plan, right? And, and vacating Powell Road-
Correct.
Off of Beck.
It made some perfect, obviously, I don't think it was done that way, wasn't it?
Yes. Well, it always had, Powell Road always was there, and, and entrance, but there was also an entrance on Annaber Trail-
It's closed off.
Until the early 1980s.
And that was done, I assume, for political reasons?
No, no, it was late, maybe, it might have been late, it was the late 80s or early 90s.
I think it was early 90s.
Yeah, early 90s.
So I was aware of some of those benefits. It's gotten mixed, this entrance way. It made sense in a design standpoint, my guess is it was taken away from other reasons.
I think it was because of, uh, of the, the subdivision across the way. There was a, an interest here in the north.
Well, that's the interest today, the subdivision. Our police chief lives there. They don't like the idea of having an entrance there, but-
I understand there's some issues, there's a pelvis out there, so, yeah.
Oh, okay, well, that's, I mean, that's a good one.
That's why I understand it both, but that was before me.
It was at the request of Plymouth Township. It was not at the request of the county, as far as I know.
County won't do unless there's a, a road issue.
Oh, you know, that's the kind of thing, now, I'll give you a in here, and, and talk to them, that, that, that's a pretty big designing difference. I think it's moving, maybe, a world away, but from my basic landscape architectural background, I'm telling you, it's that reasonable spot, but that is why you had it in here, Jack, and I'm a architect.
Sure.
Sure.
And so how, if we gave you the thumbs up on this, what, how, what's the next, um, step for you? What would you do? Cost out the various parts and develop this multi-year plan that Trusty Kermey mentioned? Is that kind of what you'd-
And, and, and the idea is in two weeks to come back to you with that, that, that's a little quick, given how many pieces there are to this now.
Yeah.
And we can still indefinitely do it in two weeks, that's what you need.
I'm not wedded to that timeframe, but I want to, I want to answer a little bit more of that question once you answer Jack's question.
So the thought would be to take the feedback here that we've got from you, as well as, you know, I, I don't know how you're going to go about this meeting, but assuming we left this meeting and we got a thumbs up, it would be to refine this, put some more detail in it, some more, some more of the understanding of some more of the detail, not specific detail, but that's what design elements, the master plan, is more conceptual. And then refine the cost, really, is start to look at the cost of things, and come back to you folks and look at it, and have you made a master plan for the future?
Uh, it's interesting you say that, because I have in my garage, and I guess I'll bring it to you, a master plan that was done in the late 70s, it was found in somebody's basement, and they gave, they gave it to me a, a month or so ago.
Okay.
Um, and it was done by an architectural firm, but it was for the park, it was a master plan, and it had a pool in it. And it had a recreation center, and you'll find, it's, it's interesting, it's laminated, it's kind of old, but, or beat up, but, um, it's, it's, it's big, it's probably three by three.
Yeah.
And hand-drawn of the, of the park.
Yeah, and we'll, we've got an large-scale drawing right here, we'll give you a nice, slightly drawn one here, in, in public facilities, you see, and the idea being similar to what I would call private golf clubs that hire a master plan, you don't want to see you guys and this work go to a master plan, and then how do you keep this scene alive for 10 to 15 years? That becomes more of a political, legal thing, like, how do you make sure other boards and committees follow the plan? Otherwise, it starts to become a hot pot of everyone's ideas, and then you can tell as a professional that this was done by multiple committees versus a master plan. You can't find a board.
End up putting it in another part of the line.
So, so, Paul, you had raised some timing questions. Um, we're, we're working several parallel tracks right now with respect to Hilltop. The one that you are, are also aware of is the fact that we, uh, put an RFP on the street for management of Hilltop. We have received two responses. Uh, the bidding is now closed, but we have received two responses, one from Billy Casper, who is the current operator, and another from, um, I don't, they, they have a more of a corporate-sounding name, but they, they operate the Cattails Golf Course and Recreation Facility in, in South Lyon, I believe. Um, we, we are looking at their proposals. We did not, in our, in our RFP, we did not, uh, indicate a nine-hole golf course. So, you know, they bid on an 18-hole golf course with a, uh, a, a, a restaurant, and not a banquet, not even, I wouldn't even call it a banquet hall, it's barely a restaurant, it's kind of just a, a food place. So that's what they're aware of. They're bidding on Hilltop as it exists right now. Now, if we were to come along now and interview them, which I would like to do, um, if we were to come along and interview them and say, oops, now we want to do a nine-hole, I don't know if they might, um, change, change their mind, they could walk away. Uh, I, I hope we wouldn't get into any legal problems with them, like we have now so thoroughly altered the bid that, that they've been, you know, misled or anything like that. So I, I've got some policy and legal concerns about that aspect, but I'm intrigued by the nine-hole concept, at least, because that is something that many people have talked about for a while, just to make Hilltop more enjoyable- many people have talked about for a while, just to make Hilltop more enjoyable, competitive, different, make it more of an executive course. I've heard that many times before as well. I just don't know if the two entities who have bid are willing to do a nine-hole. I don't know if they find it to be profitable in the end. Clearly, we're going to have half the cost and half the operations and half the golf carts and all of that, but I don't know if that's a business model that they're going to be comfortable with. And even Billy Casper, let's just say we didn't have an RFP. If we were to go to Billy Casper now and say, well, now we want you guys to run a nine-hole course, they might say, no, we're out, you know, find somebody else. So that's a concern that I have. I'd like to do those interviews before the end of the year. You're going to be on pretty much the same track. I mean, I wouldn't want to have you guys present again and do the golf course interviews on the same night, but I would think that those guys who are bidding should definitely see this and definitely be aware of what we are thinking about.
Yeah, definitely what the future holds, and I guess one of the questions I'd have for you is how fast would you envision starting to implement this if you got the okay? I mean, because someone could argue, very astutely, you know, I've been on projects where you get to this phase and it takes a full year to get funding, permits, anything that you need to do, so how fast would you envision this going forward?
Well, I mean, our current contract with Billy Casper expires in March. We've already given them notice that we don't intend to renew their contract at this time, because we're obviously going out for bids and they're aware of that. You know, but realistically, you'd be looking at, and I'm not in your business, but I think you're looking at at least two years and you may have a time when maybe you would have to shut the place down just to make some of these changes.
Well, that's to my point. If it's going to take a while to implement this, what would stop, I can't recall what the RFP said, how long is the contract for on the RFP?
I don't believe we have a term of years.
It's negotiable.
So you could say one more year of doing an 18-hole course and then we're going to, we're going to start looking at how we're going to implement it.
Quite possibly, yeah.
Yeah, everything's negotiable and up for discussion. There's no law-
I get your concern, but I think our process is probably going to be slower than you realize and therefore we could extend these operating contracts as a, under new terms, by the way, I think would be an important thing.
Is it a fair assumption to say that you would have to shut down the course for an entire season?
Oh, sorry, folks, you can't hear me. I usually talk too loud.
Is it a fair assumption to say you'd have to shut down the course for an entire season to make the modifications of the golf course?
You know, I have to look at that. We might actually be able to be creative. We've done some cool, creative things with regard to keeping courses open. We've remodeled an entire 18-hole golf course, all new greens, on about 180 acres, 200 acres, and we kept the golf course open the entire time, all 18 holes. It was crazy, temporary greens, it was, I mean, crazy things can be done if you're dead set on keeping a course open. It's not always the best way to do it, but that'll be part of the design of the process, if you will.
So let me follow up on the process in terms of public input. Obviously, as you outlined, there's been a lot of public input. We had one resident speak to that tonight. And you're looking for a concept approval from us. How would you proceed next in terms of public input? Would you have another session, just to have people look at this? Or do you think coming to this board and having an open session satisfies that?
I would defer to the politicians on that one. I'm serious.
Well, I'm just-
If you guys feel the public is comfortable enough, I'd love to finish my contract and be done.
I understand that.
I will gladly keep going until the public feels comfortable.
Well, I'm talking more maybe about design aspects of this. So, dog park, you've got it in the rear, for example.
Let's talk some details.
So if you, if you, if there was some kind of notice to dog owners in Plymouth Township, come to a meeting, and I'm being a bit facetious, but at your office on a certain day at 7:00 PM, and 100 people showed up and said, no, that's a bad-
With their dogs.
With their dogs, all barking. No, that's a bad location. I mean, is that something that you conceive of as-
Valuable, absolutely. I truly believe in this whole, in the public process, allowing input and getting the, more people to see the process, the better. So if you at all, as a board, feel more comfortable in us having one more public meeting, after one more, maybe I charge you or something, but I'll gladly do one more, public forum, however you want to do it, that allows people to see this, refine it based on, and letting people to see that this is, we've kind of got a core idea here now, we'd like some input on maybe some details, like where would, you know, how big should the dog park be? I think that's all very valuable and allows the public, not only just to feel like they've been heard, but believe it or not, some good ideas come out of all those meetings.
Yeah, definitely.
So we're, we're very open to that, but again, that's a political decision and, you know, from an economic standpoint, I'd like to be done tonight, finish it up, send it to you and move on. But I know that, I think there's a value to the process.
Will you briefly describe the design charrette you had in July-
Sure.
-at the pavilion?
Yeah, I thought that, I thought it was, I got a lot out of it myself, because it allowed me to see where the public was coming from and what was valuable and what they, what they truly liked about things and what they were seeing. So it gave us a good vision for where we were headed in some of these aspects. And again, I also do believe there's a value in allowing just people to express their opinion. I made it clear at that meeting, please express your opinion and please realize, your idea may not end up in the master plan, but you're going to be heard and if it's a good idea as professionals, we'll take it into account. I worked for a guy named Pete Dye often, we've worked for him for years, and Pete's the most famous golf course architect in the world, literally, he's well-known. And he always said a great idea could come from anyone. He used to take the guys in the field and if they could figure out how to make a bunker or a green a little better, he listened to them. Didn't always do it, but he'd always listen. So we believe in this whole concept of listening and making sure that you understand that it's not designed by committee, it's input from the community, and then we as designers try to make the best thing we can from that.
Paul, was there any scenario that you thought through that would include a driving range?
Yeah, well, yeah, it did. It was a nice one, too. It was borderline, it was borderline, like, God, that really would be good. And there's been some people who said, who said that they think they would, it would get a lot of play, but then there was the other side of it, that there's a bunch of driving ranges around, so we're not sure competitively if it would have worked. And then from a spatial standpoint, it just, it didn't seem to fit well with the community aspect. So it almost became nine-hole golf course, community pieces, or nine-hole golf course and driving range. And then a much less community aspect. So at the end of the day, I thought the community aspect was more valuable than the driving range, I think.
Okay, so you moved the dog park to where the Art Sculpture Education Center is. See, that truly is, that truly is my only conflict I'm having now, because the public has said, we would love a dog park. Great, I'd love a dog park. I don't have a dog, but I'm very concerned that that is too close to the park, where the dog park where it's sitting today is too close to where the kids are going to be playing in the park and, you know, we have a concern, there's no dogs allowed there today.
There's a natural barrier there, it's a creek.
No, this dog park is going to be in the corner, you know, we should have, I wish we could see it, this is the parking lot just north of the-
You can't get to it until you go without getting your dog in the park.
Yeah, that's right. You can't, yeah, you're right, you can't get to it any other way than taking your dog. You take the dog on this side of the park, I guess, so.
Where would you want it, Gary?
I said, put it, put it over, you know, where the education center is and just move that over, you know, near the sculpture trail or something. But I'm just concerned, you know, I don't want these kids falling into dog stuff and, you know, we're, we're pretty good about keeping our dog out of the park today. There's no, you know, the, and I go out there and tell people, sorry, the sign, 20 signs say no dogs, get your dog out of here.
Gary, clarification.
There was a lot of discussion about the logistics of the dog park.
This, this dog park that's shown here is not even in what is currently, or barely in what is currently Plymouth Township Park.
It's almost in the golf course, right?
Because, remember, the, the big airplane landing strip-
Right.
-up there, about 40 feet to the west is the end of the park, or less.
Right.
And then it's, there's a slope down and a creek, I don't know.
The dog park would be pretty much where the amphitheater was supposed to go.
Right, which is on the opposite side of the creek, isn't it? It's on the west side of the creek.
It's very, very excluded.
Yeah, that's a big barrier. Kids aren't going to be walking around, they're not walking around there today, because they can't get to it.
Right, yeah.
So I don't think it's, you don't have to worry about kids getting, I have, while we're on this, just a couple of map corrections. Existing McLumpa Park, it's an existing Plymouth Township Park, it's not McLumpa, that's not the name of the park.
It's not the official name, but it does go by both names.
No, it's not the name.
Okay.
So, okay, so then, also, the drawing, the drawing in the back where the landing strip is, the border goes much farther north.
And I apologize for that, we've had this discussion quite a few times, and I'm supposed to get with your city engineer to get, we've debated where that, that line should be.
Well, I know where the line should be.
All the way up to the fields.
I know where the line should be, and it's not where it is.
By the way, that's the cool thing I wanted to show you there.
Well, there's, we own the woods to the nor-
Right.
To the north of the landing strip.
Right.
Actually, this would be helpful, the engineer's not here, but if you guys can-
He's here, he's standing right next to you.
The line would go almost over to where the cul-de-sac is.
Exactly, yeah.
The line goes right behind the homes in the cul-de-sac.
So, the northern border goes farther east.
Yep, he's confirmed what you're saying to me, so that's, I get it. But, you know, even as we looked at that-
That's cool.
Joanne and I, where's Joanne? We all were talking about this border as a committee, and then we all said, let's say that we got it wrong on the drawing, which we do, what would we do over there? I'm not sure we put much over there. It's a big, it's all woods.
Right, it's just-
Trail.
It's just, it's more of a- There's an existing trail in there-
I get it.
And those trees are virgin climax forest that was deeded to the township in a land swap. I think it's about seven acres.
Yep, I say this for a reason, because typically, on almost every project, the boundaries are wrong, when we get the maps and we do designs. And then we do the design and the owner comes over and goes, oh, by the way, you had 25 more acres, I forgot to put it over here. It changes the whole design and it's very irritating. And I thought the same thing happened here, and I was like, oh my God, we got five more acres, this is really ours? But then luckily, we looked at it and said, I don't think we would have put anything over there anymore.
Right.
It turned out to be okay.
Okay, so what more direction do you need from us tonight?
The only thing now, I guess, would be, do you as a board want me to do another public input meeting, or do you want us to refine this and call it a master plan?
Know what?
And I guess maybe I'll throw some economics in there. If after that, after-
Well, what would, what would happen, what would happen in another, another public meeting?
Maybe some more refinement, more comfort level with the public, knowing what we're doing. I don't think anything major would change, we might, sizes of some things might change.
I mean, what if we were to put this on our website and just encourage people? We can create an email address.
Thank you.
You know, it could be, it could be called, you know, golf, golf, golf plant, or, you know, callpaul, better callpaul.com, you know, and we can-
Hey, well, hold on, I'm going to tell you exactly what, I'm doing another one of these, right here in Plymouth. I'm doing, I'm designing Fairground Park right downtown. Believe it or not, and I'm not officially designing-
Just as a park? Just as a park?
But we've done that, we put my plans up on the website and said, call me-
Well, no, we can certainly do that, and as you know, I get emails from people all the time. And they've got very specific ideas or questions about this. That's how I hooked you up with the arts people, you know, because I said, hey, I'm, I'm just the middleman here, I'm going to have you guys talk to the expert.
You know who I'd like to talk to out there in the public, if you could? One of the things we put on here, no one's noticed it yet, I'd like to investigate how we can, how we can energize this entire project using solar panels in some way. I think there's a benefit to that somehow.
So that's DTE.
Say again?
DTE might have some input.
So, again, how big those are, I have no idea, we-
No windmills.
But what's that?
No windmills.
Don't bring that up, Kurt, I was thinking of a windmill.
No, 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 no.
I was actually thinking of a windmill.
Different, different kind of windmill, though, I think.
Because it's the classic joke in a golf course of, where's the windmill? How can you not put a windmill on one of the holes and say, energizing the entire golf course?
More traditional windmill than, yeah.
Got a golf joke there.
Well, I think this is a good process, I think that's a good way of proceeding, because this is not a master plan like a community zoning master plan where you've got all those legal requirements. And presumably, as this thing gets phased, every time we come up and consider part X, part Y, part Z, we can, we can have all this public input and then proceed, and future boards can decide whether that makes sense, so. I, I think that, that's a good suggestion. Okay, we can do that, and what I'll do, Paul, is we'll talk to our IT director and he can create a, an email, a specific email address that will go directly to you. And maybe we can, maybe we can somehow link it over to the golf course committee members as well. Just, I don't know if we can do that, but it's something to think about. So we can do that, maybe for a period of, what, 30 days, 60 days?
You tell me.
Something, we'll figure something out.
Not 60.
No, 30s. 30, okay.
30's long.
Paul, one more, one more question. Next to the pool, that, is that our existing equipment shed?
Yes.
Okay.
And I am going to go forward with removing the pool, based on the input from tonight.
I mean, I think it's realistic.
In fact, that'll be part of, anyone might email me and ask me about that, and I'll say, it just doesn't make economic sense.
Yeah, and also, okay, yeah.
I like that.
All right, good.
Great idea.
And, and so, any other comments from the board?
Well, just to say, I think it's marvelous how you did incorporate so many aspects of the public input, the recreation plan, master plan, so it's really exciting, and then the creative parts and a lot of good, I won't say promises, but indications that the art piece can really work financially. I think this is an exciting thing.
Exciting. 25 years later, I finally got to explore this.
Yeah, that's cool.
This is good, I really like this.
Are there any comments or questions from the public? Sure, up here. No, the lady up here.
Got to come up front.
Hi, good evening, my name's Linda Pessin, and I live in Deer Creek, around the corner from our. I think you guys did a great job bringing, bringing a concept at this level to this meeting. I came to the meeting in July, and I appreciate that the feedback was allowed to be provided. The question I have is, I think the development of this area and keeping it as it is is a great idea. I would like to see the financials around what you think you'll get from it. In other words, it's losing money today, so what do you think the financials will look like in the phases? Is it, hey, this is a three-year break even, get ready? You know, that I think we could all sign up for, or is it, hey, we think that there's some real quick wins here? Because what I'd hate to see is a big investment without some sort of financial roadmap of the ROI on the overall effort.
No, absolutely. I think that's a, I mean, the cost is clearly the elephant in the room that we don't have an answer for at this point.
No, no, I know, so that's why I bring it up now to say, what are the, you know, what are the financial implications? And then the other thing is, this seems to me to be, to have the potential to be a really big draw to an already great community. And I've lived here since 2000 and have been able to enjoy so much about the wonderful things that Plymouth Township have to offer. And I think that it would be great to have, I'm happy to participate, a group come together, and I don't know what the process is, think about how do you promote something like this? Is part of the plan going into it to say, you know, we're going to actively take steps A group come together, and I don't know what the process is, think about how do you promote something like this as part of the plan going into it to say, you know, we're gonna actively take steps to look for ways to promote this, whatever the decision is down the road, so that we can say, hey, let's get people who already have some expertise in how to do this based on what's already working in the community, but also what works around the state, especially with the tie-in with the Art Council, which I think is pretty cool. So I would suggest, in addition to the financials and what we think we might be able to get out of it, is to say, let's, let's put some good thinking together around, you know, what it looks like in terms of how you market, promote, and use social media, and all those kinds of things. And that's my background, so I guess I'm raising my hand to be a volunteer.
You're hired.
For free. I'll, I'll definitely do that.
For free, she said, too. Remember.
We already have some of that as a benchmark, and he's in the room. It's PARC has been doing that for several years.
Yeah, great.
So they have some concepts already tested.
Yeah, terrific. Uh, anyway, I'm happy to volunteer and pitch in to help, help our community grow in ways that we can all enjoy and support, um, whatever growth plans turn out for this area. But anyway, um, I really want to commend you, because I sat here watching what you did in the short amount of time that you did, and I think you guys did a great job of really taking disparate inputs and putting a thoughtful plan together that, um, can really bring it up to the level that people will want to use it, uh, beyond what it is now, and hopefully make it turn around into a financially viable operation.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Mary.
What's that?
Mary was coming.
So, all I have to say is, wow. Um, what's not to, like, fall in love with there? A couple of things that I think need to be considered is, how do we bring in activities that are more focused for our senior citizens into this concept? I don't know, I wasn't able to be at your meeting in the summer, but did we have participation from all age ranges and what was, um, proposed from, um, that demographic? Um, you know, maybe it's shuffleboard, maybe it's a tennis court, maybe it's- Or, or like workout stations.
All the different, yeah. At, at some point, you gotta be careful of that, you know. This is why we have the community input and design.
Yep.
You don't want to throw everything in the kitchen sink at it. It'll just look like a hot, hot design.
Right.
The question comes, those all sound good. Which ones do we implement? When does it become too many? So that is kind of where, what I'd like to refine and look at what you're talking about. And again, that's why the process was, we did not think specifically about couple golf courses. Someone brought up tennis courts, and one dismissed, and not picking well enough. But at this point, I'll have to see how we might be able to incorporate that and look at it. This is the tough part of the job. We have some good input now, yet we're kind of beyond
Great, yeah.
that part of it. So how to do that, is why I talk about it with me.
Good.
We live in a community for seniors, the long past, but certainly, the right activities for young animals.
I think, what he's trying to say, and I think, um, Jack-
Okay.
I think some of those things can be addressed in future phases, too. It may not necessarily be in this phase, but get to the art part and ma, and you start to have public input on that, and encourage the art people to encourage, uh, elders and seniors to have something for them. They would incorporate it in that phase. The golf, you know, I don't know which phase is coming first even, so the master plan shows an art piece. I'm pretty confident the art piece would, would have some senior stuff in it.
Absolutely.
And we can also probably, the walking paths already would incorporate the seniors. Now, things like shuffleboard courts-
Okay, we got it. Okay.
Got it.
All right, uh, anybody else?
Oh, I wanted to make one more mention-
Uh, your time is up. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Well, can we just maybe give her another minute?
I think we have to, I think we need other residents to have an opportunity to speak.
We may want to look into the Colony Swim Club's, uh, demand there, because I know there's a very long waitlist for that, so there is a demand within the community. Um, the survey that was in 2016, that's 55% of the 1,300 respondents were interested, so just having an economic analysis-
We have, we have other people who would like to ask some questions as well, and your time is up, as you know.
Thank you.
Sir, in the, in the vest, if you could come forward, please?
Thank you.
Share your thoughts.
Just real quickly, Mike Brezak. Uh, I know Hilltop's operating deficit, I think, this year was supposed to be $150,000.
We lost $150,000 last year.
In the August eight-
We have a half a million dollar liability as well.
Where are they against that $150,000? I'd be interested to see if they're operating, and we're doing better, worse? Are we gonna lose $150,000? Does any-
We're still losing money.
Pardon me?
We're still losing money.
But not $150,000?
Uh, the last estimate?
No, the, um, it's doing, it's doing much better this year, and I think the weather conditions have been a contributing factor that. The course is in great shape. We've gotten a lot of rounds. As of the end of August, the, basically, they were breaking even. Um, now, now what will happen as you go forward is, they still have bills to pay between now and the end of the year with no revenue coming in, so you can expect a loss. But through the golf season from January through the end of August, they were at a break-even run rate.
And I'm sure everybody would agree that's pretty darn-
That's, that's a-
Pretty darn good.
That's a nice, uh, it's about a se-
Yeah.
It's about a $75,000 improvement over last year.
Okay, okay. Again, the article that appeared August 8th made it sound like we were still gonna lose $150,000.
We're losing money on the golf course, and we lost $150,000 last year. We also have a half million dollar liability. If we close the golf course tomorrow, we have to eat that half million dollar liability. That is the money that is fronted to keep this operational. And remember, about 25% of the people who use it live in the 4817O ZIP code, and I think that needs to be explained as well.
I was just trying to get to see if the, the course was operating more efficiently and more profitably this year, and it seems that it is, which I think is a good thing for, for Plymouth Township. The only last thing is, I think it's been publicly stated that there's, there's no money for Hilltop. And I know you addressed it just a few minutes ago, the elephant in the room. Every meeting that I've been at, um, the committee meetings and township meetings, we always don't talk about how much this is gonna cost. There, we're losing $75,000 or we're breaking even this year. There are a lot of cost, uh, costs to implement this master plan. This, I'll thank you from the meeting, and the input, fabulous, but I'm just concerned, where is that money? We're talking, we're talking millions here.
Sure, you're right.
And if we don't have $75,000, $100,000 to subsidize our current revenue generating business at Hilltop, where are we coming up with millions and millions of dollars to implement, which is a great plan? But where's it coming from?
Great point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Susan Nicholas.
Make it easier.
My name is Susan Nicholas, and I am a volunteer nonprofit consultant with the Plymouth Community Arts Council. And I just wanted to let the trustees and the rest of the community know that, um, the Community Arts Council Board has been discussing the possibility of doing this project for quite some time. So, um, hopefully, we're gonna be rolling in some marketing and fundraising ideas with the 50th anniversary year. And I think that you can, um, count substantially on, uh, the, uh, board members from, from our council to look at what a wonderful opportunity this is. So, um, you know, we're always looking for new people, too, but I'm sure that we can talk about forming some type of a committee to help look at joint efforts. And I know, because I've reviewed the recreation plans, both for state and for the city, that collaboration is a really important piece moving forward. And I don't think that it's, uh, beyond reality that we could get some, um, state support for some of these kinds of projects, especially if we can demonstrate that collaborative effort. So, um, I'm looking forward to helping them. I do some volunteer grant writing, and we're gonna be looking at some ways to try to support this project.
And thank you for that, but I also don't want to raise your expectations either. You know, we're, we're looking at this tonight for the first time as a group. Sculpture gardens and all of these other things that are being talked about are really in a, an extremely conceptual phase right now, so.
We're, we're, we're aware of that.
Yeah.
And, uh, I, I do want to, uh, point out that there are some other projects that have been involved, the use of the golf course, um, like these, I'm not sure if people are aware, the scouting project, but, um, Lisa has been working with the scout troops to use the golf course, um, and, and the, and McLumpa Park for, um-
Don't call it McLumpa Park.
Sorry.
Yeah, so, no, and I'm aware of that, too. The fact that the Girl Scouts were just out at the, at the pavilion-
Last weekend.
Uh, la, last weekend. They had a great time. So, I mean, look, we've got a lot of community groups that utilize the park. We've got a lot of different organizations like Arts Council, like Park, PARC. Um, we, we've got tons of arts, cultural, entertainment, uh, organizations in our community. We're blessed to have that.
And I-
So we want to make sure that we're all on the same page, too. I don't need, you know, I don't think anybody wants to have, you know, competing groups doing their own things. I think all of these things are complimentary as well.
I agree with you, and I, I think that, that was my point, that some of those events and activities can continue regardless of, uh, you know, whatever the final decision is.
Sure, okay. Uh, good. Anybody else? Very good. Okay, so that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna put it online. We're gonna seek citizen input, and, um, we'll, we'll get back to you, basically, I think, right? Okay.
Thank you, Paul.
All right, thank you. And you got applause, too. Okay, uh, we're gonna take a, a 10-minute break and reconvene here at about, uh, 8:50. Thanks.
Thank you, creative.
Now, now he's putting here.
Yeah. First and foremost, I mean, we have a look at this as a golf course facility, and twice, I don't want to raise anybody's expectations or don't start raising money for some- I still don't know how much. Well, some of their fans, you know, they want to have a public meeting this year, which is going on here. Well, it's all going on here. They want to hear more about what could happen to our part of it, but-
Oh, is it, should I turn it off?
No, I already did. I, I-
Oh, you checked it out?
He told me that this is not on the line. He said he left his phone in here. I said, I said I had given it to him.
Oh, so you checked?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I didn't know what to do.
So this could be online.
Yeah.
Do we have to get a- We're gonna make, we can make some kind of, uh-
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we make kind of a field-
Yeah, Tom-
Make green space.
I like it.
And you know, we might actually make money, so that'd be a good one.
I know, you probably still played it before. You were looking, you said, okay, where's these holes?
Right.
You know, you say, okay, I'm still down the road with the big ones, so I'm okay there. I kinda like that little dog leg coming in. It's kind of cool. To make the greens more playable and stand out. Huge hills. I think we got a shot that we can get some faster play in, too.
Right, right.
You do that, you can turn the course around and get some, get some people coming and going pretty quick. You can just leave that one there. I'm gonna run it back.
It's so hard to see from where we're sitting. I thought the dog park was cool.
Yeah, which colored it.
Do you, do you know what this purple, is that like a trail to walk along?
I think so. And then, uh, the pink is, I understand, is that it's a, a walking trail with, with some of that art, pieces of art in it.
I see. Oh, that may be with a dot.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's called, it's called-
Yeah.
Cool. Oh, I- I have no idea what this is. Oh, that's what-
Sure, you're right. I will, I will think.
Once I, once I hit that email board, some of the changes that's gonna be, I think, they're gonna be the same, what's probably gonna be, that one, most likely, right? I don't think- But I guess, you know, the question is, do you sign your name? Right. We're getting really nice, getting kind of a- He, he did say that, uh, just that we talked about getting it to New York and that, because that's where he, or he was supposed to say that. Yeah, we're not gonna go to New York.
She's councilman's friend. They're all crazy. They made her in our neighborhood. She was the president of our board. They voted seven, not. They made her. Uh, they sent her, she's nothing but trouble. She never does anything constructive. It was, it's totally on top. You know, so my wife worked at a park. She got a- Podcast about-
Yeah, yeah, she was really drinking the gas.
But I don't know what the rest of the board, they took it. Is that what she said?
Yeah, that's what she said.
I worry, I didn't, I never made a dime.
What, you were co-founder?
I know I, I was. And I was general councilman for years, and I never did a dime. I did it for the community. God damn it. That's just- Because she's never done anything for this community. I know she does. And, uh, and councilman sits there and texts her, because she's not smart enough to come up with the words on her own. So she's reading it off her phone. And she has nev, she has never done anything for this community. Nothing. Other than, other than crap on people.
Yeah?
Yeah. Come on, I feel so much better. No, I don't. I hate that crap, but I just, you know, it might change.
You can say whatever you want to say about us.
Absolutely. We're fair game. That's exactly right. We are fair game.
Exactly right.
Remember when they had the mobile call calling my house, asking my kids?
Yeah.
No, they don't. All right, all right. Ready, Dan?
I'm ready.
Come on, Jack.
Okay, everybody, we're back on the record, and we are now moving on to item F6. This is the presentation, nope, that's, we did that. This is item F7. This is the budget discussion presentation from Police and Fire, and we're gonna start tonight with the fire budget, and Chief Phillips. Good evening, sir. Good evening. How's everybody doing tonight? We're great. All right, well, today we're gonna be talking about our 2019, uh, Fire Department Budget.
Um, you've seen most of this, I did, the, the police chief had an org chart in there, so I figured I had to add an org chart, I, I can't believe I missed it. The fire department right now consists of a fire chief, an administrative assistant, a fire inspector. We have three platoons with eight personnel on each platoon. A platoon is made up of a captain, two lieutenants, and five firefighters. That platoon of eight is dispersed among our three fire stations in the community. I'm gonna give you a little bit of history, in 2017, we reopened Fire Station Two, as most of you know. We hired three additional firefighters, and we made an agreement with Northville Township to move into Fire Station Two. 2018, this year, we are hiring three additional firefighters. Now, we got a safer grant that is gonna pay seventy-five percent of the pay and benefits of those three firefighters. Uh, in the first year, it's gonna be, pay seventy-five percent of a first-year firefighter's pay the second year, and thirty-five percent the third year. All total, it's, they say it's about a $700,000 grant, our portion is about $200,000, the federal portion is $489,000. Also this year, Northville Township left Fire Station Two, uh, they are no longer in it, they are no longer utilizing it in any way, shape, or form. We received a $200,000 federal grant to replace our self-contained breathing apparatus. That, uh, apparatus was eighteen years old, we actually got it in 2017. We purchased the, the equipment and paid for it in January of 2018, which is why it's included in 18. We also, this year, we put in for about $12,000 worth of fireworks money, grants, to train our firefighters. Now, this year in 2019, almost, most of our expenses have already been approved by the board in the ordering of the fire pumper. At $663,000. $400,000 of that is coming from a grant that Representative Noble got for us.
Are you driving?
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay, I'm switching slides.
I, when, when I.
I'm wondering why it's.
So, so, uh, I gave you guys a white version, because it's easier on ink if you wanted to print it, but I put black up here, because I thought it was easier for, to read as a crowd.
Okay, cool.
Um, so we, we've already received $200,000 of that state money, me and, uh, Treasurer Clinton verified that today. Uh, we also sold, um, uh, some money for the cell tower.
Cell tower money, $400,000.
For $400,000, so help pay for that. In the budget, in the capital improvement line item, we need to replace, uh, one ambulance at about $220,000. The ambulance that we're replacing is a 2003, that, so that's gonna be a sixteen-year-old ambulance by the time it gets replaced. Um, that vehicle is unreliable right now, it is breaking down, we have towed it four times this year. Uh, also in the budget, we have to, I have talked to the engineer, we have to replace the floor drains at Fire Station Two. Uh, the, uh, steel rusted, and the concrete broke away while we had abandoned the property, so we have to replace that. I think we're a little high at $30,000, but we wanted to make sure we had enough, um, in the budget to cover all the expenses. We have to replace one of our outdated, uh, physiocontrol cardiac monitors at about $35,000. That one would also go, uh, into service immediately. The heaters at Fire Station Two are ancient, uh, two of them do not work anymore, they haven't worked in about three years. Uh, we were stealing parts of them to make the other ones work, so we would have to replace the heaters, the tube heaters there. Again, I, I expect the prices to come in much better than this, but again, we wanna make sure that, you know, we have enough money in the, in the account to pay for it. Um, that, that building was not maintained for six years. Uh, we've done a great job of, you know, keeping it open, keeping everything working, but we have to start, you know, looking at replacing things, because they're costing us too much money to run today. The police department recently replaced the modems in their police cars, because Verizon is going away from the 3G network to the 4G network. We have to do the exact same thing with our cardiac monitors, um, so that's a, a, a cost of $3,000. Uh, the network will run until December of, um, I put 2018 in here, it should be the end of 2019, that is an error. Um, our bay doors on some of our fire stations at the bottom are rusting, we expect about $6,000 to replace them. We looked at, we had a builder come in, not a builder, a painter come in, he offered to paint Fire Station Two for free, but he wasn't gonna paint a building for free that had a bunch of rust that was gonna be worthless. So to replace the, we need to replace the, the bottom panels of all the bay doors, that's a cost of about $6,000. Um, total of about, in capital improvements, about nine, $984,000, most of that being the fire truck.
Okay, so let me jump in at this point, and I, I do have to say that, uh, from the outset, the entire draft budget for next year assumes that the Public Safety Millage does not pass.
That is correct.
So, I, I will tell you that, other than the fire pumper, which is basically an earmarked project, which we have already found a one-time, uh, sale of property to augment that one-time grant, that would be the only thing that would likely survive, uh, if the, if the millage does not pass. So those other things on there, like the ambulance, we've had a lot of internal debate on whether or not we should even put that on the screen, because if, again, if the millage does not pass, we're gonna have to be, we're gonna have to prioritize, uh, spending and defer capital improvements uh, in order to, in order to satisfy the, the mandated, uh, budget requirements such as pension and OPEB.
The ambulance that we, the two backup ambulances we have today, will not survive through next year. There's, there's no way we're gonna keep them in operation. Uh, they are, they are obsolete, they are old, they are broken, they break down every day. I am not kidding when I tell you that there is a box of fuses, spare fuses, that we keep in it, because that truck will regularly break down. We pull one fuse out, we put a new one in.
Is that the international?
That is the international, yes.
Kurt, if we have the $400,000 from the grant, from the state of Michigan, plus the $400 from the sale of the tower, that's $800,000.
And the, the engine is 663.
Right.
And the, we still need money to augment the, the, the fire, the ambulance though, correct?
Yeah, we'd still need about $60,000 to buy that ambulance, you know, over and above.
Twenty is not all in?
What's that?
$220,000 is not all in, you have to add another sixty to it?
No, no, above the $800,000 you referenced.
My, my point is, you're pretty close.
Yes.
Some other things we can work on here as offsets, for example, floor drain. I'd like you to do some investigation, you probably know better than I, but we did some floor drain work in there in the last ten years.
Uh, not at Station Two, we did floor drain, uh, at Station Two, it was probably about fifteen years ago, that was not the floor drains, that was the station, um, the septic was going into the Hines, and the stormwater was going into the sanitary, and we had to swap that out. When it was originally built, they had put it in, they had cross-contaminated them to the wrong thing. We replaced that, but that was, that was over fif- I'm, that was over fifteen years ago now. What's that?
Explain the floor drain work.
So, in the middle of all the, the drain, uh, the bays, there is a drain, and that drain drains into a catch basin that then goes into the sanitary sewer.
To separate oil?
It's to separate oil, correct. The metal in those drains started to rust while we were not there, when we were storing golf carts in that building, that was all rusting. And it caused the cement that holds those drains in to crack. So right now, all that cement in the center is all cracked and broken, it's a trip hazard, it's, uh, our insurance company came in and they said that that's a hazard, but they said, well, it looks like you've got a good handle on fixing this, so we're not concerned with it at the moment.
So what is the fix, saw cut it out? Put a PVC pipe?
What it is, is it's trench drains running down the center, so they're gonna have to cut concrete on about a foot each side of it, and then come back in with new trench drains, re-pour the concrete back in around it. That's, that's the fix.
Highlight, it's not $30,000.
No, it, it's, it's most likely not, but we put some extra in there just in case you run into unforeseen conditions. You, you don't wanna go in there and say, oh, it's gonna be $15,000 or $20,000, and the next thing you know, you hit some line, or there's an unforeseen condition that, that brings it up, so.
Is the building department will supervise this?
Yeah.
Not the, not in the.
It would be more like, likely the building department, I just, I was helping the chief with getting some costs from some, some contractors that I know.
Cindy, how is that? How is the ambulance reflected in the current version of the budget, is it 220 all at once, or, or did we finance it over five years?
Uh. Yeah, no, it's, it's, uh, pay for it all right away. If we wanted to finance this over a period of five years, that would definitely drop it in the budget, which, as you know from mine, it was my initial, uh, way to go.
Yeah. I think we can maybe talk about this tomorrow, but I think, I think we have to be, how I structured the millage request, we have to be as close as possible as your original, as your original model for financing this equipment and spacing it out over time, otherwise the numbers just don't work. So I would, I'd like to, to go back to the financing, um, option for, for the ambulances.
And that would, that would drop that 220 to about 80,000.
Yeah.
Or a little bit less than that, um, with, you know, with financing, and I believe we, we had figured we could get it at about four percent, a little bit above four percent financing. Um, I, I have not discussed the financing option with the vendors that we have used in the past for ambulances at this time.
My point is that I think there's offsets that could be found, that if we had to pay for this or finance it, even if the millage failed, we could do it, but it'll take some work. In other words, put it on time, or cut out some of the, get better prices for floor drains, and heaters, or see what we could do with the gas heaters that are in there, what, what brand are they, are they Modine?
You know, I ca- I can't tell you right now, but I had the original company that installed them come out and look at them, and they, they recommended replacing them, um, because we were, we were robbing parts to, to keep other parts working.
That's why I'd like to know what brand they are, and you're saying that you're absolutely sure that parts are not available.
That's what the manufact- well, that's what the company, we call your, that's what their guy told me.
Yeah, but, uh, we need to do some further work, typically, gas heaters are very old, and they're around, in private buildings, they stay a long time.
They stay a long time, yes, absolutely. This one comes out the side of the building on the, uh, south side, and it's, I, I know that whole portion needs to be replaced, it's all rusting out of there. Uh, the motor, the, the, I don't know what it's called, the extraction motor, um, the blower, uh, probably needs to be replaced.
That's on the rooftop?
It is not on the rooftop, that comes out the side of that building. Um, and the, one of the reasons we did that, um, is because, on a lot of our buildings, we have that, that membrane, and you don't, you wanna put as, as few holes into a membrane as possible. All right, that's, that's the majority right there of our, of our budget, other than manpower. Um, we have not replaced our equipment in a long time, we have to start, you know, looking at replacing this stuff. This building hasn't had any major repairs to it for ten years, easily. The, the, the last drains that you're referring to, Trusty Kermit, was probably the last major thing we did to that building, with the exception of, I believe, the roof that was done about ten years ago. Um, the other major cost, obviously, with, uh, the fire department budget is the pension. Um, we're paying about $568,000 for the defined benefit pension in 2019, and an additional $120,000 for the defined contribution pensions. And healthcare costs are almost $300,000.
Is that, what's in the healthcare cost number?
Uh, medical, dental, optical, and.
Who?
What's that?
Who is in it, only the active employees, or have you included, this includes retired employees?
Um, I believe this line item does include retirees, or actual, we've moved, these are all actives.
Active only?
Yeah. Now, we will, we will.
It all depends on, it's sort of a, not really a lot of point to the discussion until after November.
The, uh, the other thing with this is, we can't see cost savings in healthcare costs, because the assumption is that newly hired employees come in with a family, because we don't wanna under-budget. So if, generally, we hire firefighters, they're single, they don't have families, so their first year there, a lot less. Um, but again, we don't budget that way, because I haven't hired them yet.
So you're assuming it's the most expensive coverage, family?
Correct, because I don't wanna come back at the end of next year and say, I didn't budget properly, so if we hire single guys, which we most likely will, we'll see, you know, a drop in those costs.
It's a hell of a criteria.
Guys, you meant both male and female, didn't you?
That is correct, I said guys, I meant firefighters, employees. You know, we had one fu- we had one employee get married this year, um, that employee has since, uh, given us a resignation, so he will be moving to another, uh, fire department, um, and we'll be hiring a replacement for him.
Single one, yeah. Come on.
We love everybody, we love everybody.
Now, everything else in this, in this slide you've seen before, this is a heavy vehicle replacement schedule that was created some years ago, Trusty Kermit, uh, gave me this a few years back. Um, with the purchase of this truck, we will be replacing our oldest truck, the 1989, um, which was planned replacement in 2009. Um, so ten years later, we're replacing that vehicle. Uh, we still have the, we still have some others, and with the ambulance that was purchased in 2002, we received it in 2003, will be, uh, replaced.
That's the interna- we bought.
That's the international. Correct. Um, so again, the twenty-eight-year-old fire pumper, you've seen this slide before, will be moved into reserve status, uh, it's not worth anything to sell, so we would keep it when we were doing preventative maintenance, on the other three engines, we would put it in to service. The engine three, twenty-six years in service, uh, that would still be here in the community. Engine one, eighteen-year-old vehicle, uh, would still be operating. Here's the international.
Okay, stop, stop. The, the three fire engines, this year, what is your best estimate on what we have spent out of the general fund to keep those vehicles operational?
Not even estimate, we, what we've actually spent is $97,000. Uh, we have two operational right now, one of them is at Detroit Diesel getting engine work, uh, I was told that's gonna be a $5,000 repair. Uh, the truck should be back in service on Friday.
You send it back to the factory?
Uh, actually, WW Williams is the Detroit Diesel, uh.
Oh, it's not the dealer?
Uh, not dealer, they're an, they're an engine repair shop.
It's not back to Detroit?
No. No, no, this is the, the authorized, um, repair facility in the area.
So you're, so you're $96,000, does that include the five grand, or are we gonna add five?
That's $97,000 plus the five grand.
Plus the five, okay, so we're spending over $100,000 this year to keep this stuff moving.
Correct.
Okay.
And the year's not over. And the other thing is in my, um, and Cindy can touch base on this, in our, uh, vehicle maintenance budget, we do not include fuel costs until January. So fuel costs haven't even been added into this, which are gonna be more, because we spend about $20,000, I think, on fuel every year. But again, that's added in after the fact, after the year, after the budget, year is added.
That's moving up, the cost of fuel is moving up.
Yes.
Cindy, are you, are you assuming we're at full staff on January one for the budget? Okay, I still think, I'm personally comfortable with a strategy where if the target is 24, you budget 22 and a half or 23, 'cause you're never gonna have a situation where you're at full staff from January one to December 31st, it just doesn't happen. People quit, um, you, you, you delay hiring people, maybe people have, somebody has to take a medical leave, I don't know, but I'll bet if you look historically, you know, you're always one to one and a half people under your, your target headcount.
So how much is that worth, 20, 22 and a half versus 24, money-wise, for the year?
I mean, a full, a fully loaded person, probably worth, I don't know, 80 to 90?
Eighty-one thousand?
Yeah, but that's for a new hire.
That's a new hire, yes.
Five-year person, it's more than that.
Yes. We're, we're talking about new hire. The, the only problem with that is, we, in this case, 75% of those funds are coming from the federal government, and we have to show that we have 24 personnel here for this period of time, or they're gonna ask for all that money back. So they will give you the, you know, if you have somebody quit and you have to hire somebody else, you know, they'll, they'll make exceptions to that, that you're doing your due diligence.
We'll strap a helmet on, Gary, and we'll be fine. Well, we'll strap a helmet on, Gary, and we'll be fine.
But again, I don't want to come at the end of the year and say, "Hey, my budget projections are wrong by, you know, 50, 60,000 dollars, because, hey, I was able to recruit and keep them all year."
And, and we would be thrilled if that could happen, but the reality is, we are losing, we, it seems to me like we're losing somebody at least every three months around here, you know?
Yeah, this year, we lost, we lost one in January, we lost one in July, August, and we lost one this month, yeah.
Yeah, so that's three this year. So, you know, something to think about when we start talking about retaining individuals. We, we spend a lot of time and effort and money to attract and hire these individuals, and, and, well, they, they do come in with a certain amount of training, but we invest a lot of money into them, and this, I don't want us to start becoming a revolving door community where people are just coming in to get it on their resume and get some training and experience, and then they go on somewhere else. I mean, look, we're never going to be able to compete. I want to make it really clear, we're not competing with Dearborn and Livonia and Ann Arbor and Lansing. But, you know, we also want to make sure that we're not going to be a training ground either. And we're, you know, losing three or four guys a year and having to rehire three or four guys a year is not acceptable. Sorry.
Well, the, the one firefighter who just left, we're going to be spending $1,500 for gear that was made for him that has not arrived yet.
Great. How long was he here?
A year. September 11th would have been a year. So we, we ordered him gear when we knew he was going to pass probation, you know, and then he got another opportunity.
Well, so maybe we need to rethink some of that. I have a couple of que-, well, one question.
I'll be honest with you, some firefighters, I have to, I have to order gear a month after they get here because we don't have anything to put them in. You know, we, we don't have a storage room full of turnout gear that they can wear. You know, and all this stuff has to be custom-made for each firefighter.
What do they use, then?
Well, sometimes we, they, sometimes, like this firefighter who just left, we did have a set of gear that we were able to put him in while he worked. But the newest firefighter that we just got, he's much taller, much bigger, we didn't have anything out there to fit him.
So-
So we, you know, we had to order-
So now we have to hire short guys that all fit this, and they're single?
Yeah, so what we did is, you know-
Something wrong with this model here, Chief.
In all seriousness, why does it take a year to get the gear?
Well, it doesn't. What happens is, is there was no rush to order him gear, because we had gear that fit him. We had it, you know, adjusted for him, and then once we got to the point where we were comfortable, we said, "Okay, we'll order a new set."
But for this tall guy, how, how quickly, a person, how quickly do you get the gear for him, or her?
They tell me a lot quicker than what it in reality is. It's about six weeks in reality.
Okay, all right.
They always tell me it'll take about four weeks. So we're back to the AEV, the International Ambulance. This truck has been in service for, it'll be 15 years right now. We've already rebuilt the motor once. This is the truck that has a box of fuses in it. This is a medium-duty vehicle. It's much larger than what we're currently buying. What we did is we purchased F-550s, which are a much smaller vehicle. These F-550s have been in service since 2015. We bought two of them. These trucks are highly efficient compared to those Internationals. They are a lot less money per mile to operate, per year to operate. These are the way we're going to go. These are so successful, in fact, that all the fire departments like us that had medium-duty vehicles are all moving back down to smaller vehicles because they're much more reliable, much more cost-effective.
Well, when we bought those, it was the fad of the day, and we were told how they were such a great value and it was the right thing to do.
Yes, you are correct. And International also, also sold us on the engine that they had been selling for years and years and years, and they said, "Oh, but we even got a better engine that we're going to sell you. It's our latest and greatest." And we bought the latest and greatest, and that turned out to be a horrible motor. We replaced it after 60, 60,000 miles, those motors. They were horrible for us. They were not a good. But these, these vehicles in, you know, in two and a half years now have been exceptional. As a matter of fact, both of them, I've only had one major repair, and that was a brake repair, and that was two months ago on one of the vehicles. These have been excellent vehicles over the last two years, two and a half years.
Chief, how many miles do you put on an ambulance in a year?
We put about 20,000 miles on an ambulance.
Hard miles?
Um, yeah, hard miles. A lot of the time, they're idling. I, we take very good care of our vehicles, so I would say that, you know, if you want to say they're hard miles, yeah, we, we drive fast to get to the scene, but we, you know, drive the speed limit, bring them back. We keep them washed every day. We keep the oil changed. These are, these are well-maintained vehicles.
I just wanted to respond to some of the lies I saw on Facebook that talk about, you know, we, parts are readily accessible, and we can just go down the street and, you know, take care of these 20, 30-year-old vehicles. And, you know, I just want to make sure that-
That's not true. Now, if you get into the fire engine, so I'm going to, I'm going to point out Engine 3 right here. Engine 3 is a 26-year-old truck. It's not even the oldest in our fleet. The door handles on that truck, they don't make any. We had to have them, they had to go find them on a truck in a junkyard to put new door handles on that truck. That's, Pierce is only required to make parts for 25 years. They stopped making, and they stopped making parts when it becomes not cost-effective for them. Now, the 28-year-old truck has a lot of parts. That was, that was the best truck made for the, at the time. Every community bought one of those. That's an awesome truck. So they kept that manufacturing going for that truck. But with that being said, that's the truck that we have to replace the, the frame. I mean, the frame is rusting out of that truck. It's almost 30 years old.
Yeah. Thanks.
So, yeah, these parts are not readily available. And that's all I have, except for questions from you.
Do you have any, you don't have to do it tonight, but what, what new ideas have you percolated up to extend your resources through cooperation, anything creative that we can regionalize? Because I know the long-term trend in your mind is to do 100% transports, but what other things? Because that's kind of the other direction. That's bringing it inside versus spreading it out.
So one of the things that we've done is we did that training burn this year, where we brought all of our neighbors in to train and fight fire exactly like us. That was great for the city of Northville, the city of Plymouth, and the township of Northville. Great training that firefighters don't normally get in a controlled environment. Again, it's not something you see often. You don't see fire departments burning houses down every other week. It's, it's a, it's a long, arduous process. It took us, the, the, the Bittingers who donated the home contacted me seven, eight months in advance to make that all happen. And, you know, our neighbors were able to help. The state forfeiture funds that we get, we invite all of our neighbors in here for fire training. You know, we invite Canton, Livonia, Northville, into Plymouth Township so that we can train together, and then hopefully, they'll start doing the same with us with this, this money. We're getting the money from the state, and then we're utilizing it not only to train our own firefighters, but if you're bringing an instructor in from Wisconsin to do a great training here, why not bring all your neighbors in so they can enjoy it too? We've done that twice this year.
You mentioned forfeiture. Tell me about that with fire.
Forfeiture? No, state firework. Did I say forfeiture?
Yes, you did.
I, I'm sorry. I was, I was looking at the police. It's the firework money.
It's drugs, Dan, it's drugs.
Yeah, it's drugs.
What did you say, fireworks?
Fireworks, yes. When the state of Michigan allowed the use of-
Fireworks to come up.
The expanded use of fireworks, a, a, a fund was generated, and that money was to be used to train firefighters. We are aggressively going after that money every single chance we get. I'm looking for another $10,000 in training for 2019. There's $12,000 in the account right now. We're, we're doing a really good job of, you know, finding that money and offsetting our training costs here. Because we're bringing out a lot of young, new firefighters, and we need to train them up.
Yeah, I think it should not go without notice that you have gotten a number of grants, and I think that deserves some positive mention from up here.
Yes, as a matter of fact, today, I spent all day working on grants. Right now, the city of Dearborn Heights, we just provided them with all of our data. They are doing a grant to buy new radios. Now, we bought radios in 2014, so we're not going to be replacing all of our radios, but, you know, we may buy one or two for this new fire truck, or the next one that we get, or the next ambulance that we get, you know, lesser cost for us. We also wrote a grant with the city of Ypsilanti to get Lucas 3 devices, which go on your chest to do automatic chest compression. This is an amazing device that has saved countless residents. I mean, we had, we had an arrest last weekend in which we had a great save. When I first started in this job, if you were doing CPR on somebody, you expected the patient to die. When you started CPR, you were not saving people. It was 98% failure rate. This is, this is in the, in the late 80s, early 90s. Today, we expect, when we start CPR, when we start advanced procedures, we expect our patients to survive. It's, it's a much higher number now. I think our, I think our success rate's like 50/50 right now. It's amazing. We had three saves in one day, which is unheard of. We have a tremendous save rate. We got a grant, we got grant money to buy those. We got grants to buy video laryngoscopes, to which, when we're putting the tube into your throat to breathe for you, we just have a video camera at the end of it, so we can visualize all of the internal organs here, so we can see exactly where it goes and how to get into your lung. That was grant money we got. The self-containment breathing apparatus. We've joined in numerous grants.
So, and, and I think the reason Jack brings that up, and I want to amplify it, is the fact that in the context of this millage request, we frequently hear the question of, "What are you guys doing to, to find money? What are you guys doing to make ends meet?" And I, I'm proud of the fact that we've been able to get, that you frankly, have been able to secure some of these grants. I'm proud of the fact that we've been able to be creative and sell surplus property. I'm, I'm proud of the fact that we've been able to work better, I think, with our neighbors than we have in, in a long time. And I, and that brings me to a question, which I, I want you to answer, because I got a, kind of a snotty email from a resident not too long ago who said, "Well, you guys got the SAFER grant now, so you don't need that millage anymore. Ha ha." How would you, how would you respond to that, that comment?
Well, what I would respond to that comment is, is first of all, the SAFER grant is for a limited time only. It goes for three years.
Tell us how that works.
So how it works is, the very first year, we get 75% of a first-year firefighter's pay and benefits. So that is 75% of his total compensation. The second year, we get 75% of a first-year firefighter's pay and benefits. Well, as you all know, an employee here has a stepped increase. So it's not going to be 75% of his pay. It's going to be 75% of a first-year firefighter. And then the third year, we, we get paid 35%. So the whole idea of the SAFER grant is for, when a community wants to increase their workforce, they get a huge bonus in the beginning, and then it's ever-decreasing until the community can pick up the whole cost.
Right.
Just to help the community, to increase the number of firefighters, and I believe there's a SAFER grant for police officers as well, to increase the number of public safety people in the community. That's the goal.
Okay. Any other questions?
We've gotten two SAFER grants since 2014. One for $1.3 million, and now this one for $750,000. So today, I worked for six hours on writing grants. I worked on a grant with the city of Plymouth to buy new fire hose. I worked on a grant with the city of Dearborn Heights to get us new radios, and I am working on our own grant to get us more equipment.
Explain what, like with fire hose, what, if the grant was one, you'd share it with the city of Plymouth and Northville?
Yes, so what they're called is regional grants. So instead of the federal government giving just the city of Plymouth and the city of Northville money for their hose, what they've said is, "We'll give extra consideration if you join your neighbors, and you, instead of buying, you know, just fire hose for your community, you all buy the same fire hose for all of your community, now, you know, we'll give you extra consideration. We can, we can bundle those costs and get, you know, better purchase." That's how we got those Lucas defibrillators. We worked with the city of Ypsilanti. All of the fire chiefs around here are constantly talking together, working together, trying to figure out how to do grants together. If you'll recall, last year, we worked with the, Northville to buy a aerial apparatus. We had to do a letter of understanding.
I thought that was NOVI. Was that NOVI?
It was NOVI, us, and Northville, all three. So what we wanted to do is have a, a fire aerial that would be regional between, you know, basically, this whole 275 corridor from Canton to NOVA.
Did they win it?
We did not win it. No, we wrote the grant. We did not win it. Truck grants are the hardest to get. They're the hardest to get. As a matter of fact, if you go do nothing but go for truck grants for 10 years or 20 years, you may get one, or you may get none. I've found it's a lot better, write a lot of smaller grants. You're more likely to get them. And then, that's why we got the, the Airepac grant. That's why we got a bunch of these grants. We're writing smaller grants, but we're getting almost every year.
And without the $400,000 that Representative Noble secured out of the state budget, we'd still be having that old fire truck in, in service, right?
That's correct. And, and I don't, I don't want to kid you, that truck's not, that truck's not driving away when the new truck gets here. I mean, it has no value to us to sell. I mean, what are we going to get, $3,000 for it, scrap metal? That, it's a lot more value to when we take our brand-new truck in for an oil change. We still have a truck serving in our community.
Okay, all set, gentlemen? Any questions from the public? Chief, any wrap-up?
Yeah, I just want one thing, other, ways to save money, like Trusty Kermey said, is, this International truck is significantly more expensive than the truck we moved to in 2015. I caught a lot of flack from people, including firefighters. Why are we going to a smaller truck? Much more cost-efficient. This truck, much more cost-efficient, the four-wheel-drive truck. Those Internationals, we used to get them stuck in the middle of your subdivision. I mean, in the middle of the winter time. They couldn't get around. This truck, a lot cheaper, $60,000 cheaper, and it's operating a lot more cheap per mile and much more efficiently.
Are you going to buy the same type of box, or are you going to move up to a different box?
We're going to buy the exact same truck. What we're, what we've, what we've determined, though, is this is an F-550. We're going to move down to an F-450 because we don't need, we don't need the weight capacity of the F-550. We, we, we overcompensated. We've realized that, you know, we don't need that, that the difference between the two chassis is so little. Well, the difference is the rear springs. When we take the rear springs out and we put a liquid spring system in, which overly compensates us, so that saves us money as well.
Okay, all set? Excellent. Thank you very much, Chiefs. And thanks for your service. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
See, it takes three cops to do this job.
Here you go. Look at him. He's good.
Good evening. I'm not going to be as thorough as Chief Phillips, but hopefully, I'll provide you with enough information for you to make a decision on this year's budget. First of all, I'd like to thank this board for your leadership, and I can't tell you how professional and refreshing it is to work with this board. And if you recall, last year when I was here, we spent a great time, a great deal of time discussing how the police department operates. I felt it was important to go through many slides to talk about where officers were assigned and what they do. Everything is pretty much status quo as what was last year. If you look, go to the next slide, the organizational chart, this really is where 90% of our money goes. And, I don't know, Mark, you still got your pointer out, or is that, you already disconnected?
I'll put it back in my office.
Oh, don't worry about it. This is where 90% of the, of the money goes. The, oh, some of the significant things on this chart is, we still have one vacancy, police officer vacancy. The board approved 30 officers last year. We have interviews next week to try to hire our 30th officer. Again, this is our minimal staffing, all right, and I want to make that very clear, that this isn't just some luxury number we're trying to get to. 30 is our minimal number. And I say it's minimal because, right now, we have an officer, she's out on a pregnancy, well, she's still working, but she'll be on light duty for another six months, I believe it is. We have two other officers, I think in 2019, that will probably leave the department. One has, is interviewing with the federal agency, and possibly another one's going to another agency. Which then brings us up to our biggest challenge. Our biggest challenge, as the supervisor pointed out, is retaining and recruiting. I said it last year as well. It's difficult. We are competing with surrounding communities. We don't offer the best benefits. We don't offer the highest pay, and it's very difficult when we create a situation where the benefits are portable, meaning they have a defined benefit, they have a healthcare, a health trust, and they might be here for three or four years, and they'll see that Northville Township is hiring, or many other departments that still have and provide more lucrative benefits. So retaining- So retaining i- is, is very difficult. Uh, as the lieutenants would tell you, they're always in a hiring mode. Uh, we're always, always hiring. Probably for the last two or three years, we've been always trying to hire people. So it's difficult. Uh, our, again, this is the road, roadmap that tells you what we're going to do this year. Uh, if, if you look, uh, we promoted the supervisor, uh, Police Service Aid Supervisor, she started last week. Uh, what we're trying to do is reduce costs, uh, through our support staff, not through our sworn officer staff. So what we've been able to do is, the front desk, we, at one point, we had five employees. We had two full-time and three part-time employees at the front desk. Uh, as of today, we have one full-time employee. Uh, the, the part-time was just offered another position within the township. So we have one full-time employee, which, uh, again, it's, it's a pretty drastic change from what we've had in previous years.
I just poached his, uh, his part-time employee today, so, uh, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, supervisor.
Nice.
But what we want to do is, we want to become more efficient and effective with the front desk. We want residents to be able to come in there. We're never, we don't want to ever be closed. We don't want every, anybody to ever think that the police department is closed. So, uh, what we're proposing in 2019 is, we, we want to, uh, train our, our police service aides or dispatchers who are here 24/7 to handle a lot of the front desk duties, which means there'll be less activity between the normal work hours, 8 to 4:30. Somebody could come in at 2 o'clock in the morning and register a firearm or pick up a police report. So, we're working, and now that we have a, a police service aid supervisor in place, that was one of the duties that she's been charged with, is to figure out how we can become more efficient at the front desk. Uh, to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense just to have somebody, a smiling face, uh, in the event that somebody may walk in at some time during the day. Uh, but, at the same time, anytime a resident comes into that front lobby, I want to make sure that they have the ability to talk to a police officer or a police service aide. So, I, I know, uh, Clerk, uh, Jerry was very concerned about it. We've had a discussion, and, and we are working on that. So. The other thing I wanted to mention, uh, effective tonight, uh, Lieutenant John Brothers will become the Assistant Chief. Uh, he doesn't know that, he just learned that just now. Uh, he's, he's done a great job. He's going to remain a lieutenant, uh, and, and this is kind of a unique thing for our police department. His rank and pay and benefits, everything, it's an assignment. It's an Assistant Chief assignment. Uh, it's consistent with what we did with our, our last Assistant Chief, Bob Smith. I'm, I'm sure, uh, Trustee Kermie recalls. Uh, next year, we might decide, uh, Lieutenant Kudra is the Assistant Chief. So, uh, both of them do a great job, and, and this is, uh, uh, something that I was happy to do for John, and I certainly appreciate the board's support on that as well. Uh, if I, if we go to the next slide? These are, these are the three things that we're going to do, uh, this year. We want to accreditate the police department. What, and what that means is, uh, the Michigan Chiefs of Police went through, uh, having an accreditation process. Uh, our policies is, policies and procedures have not been changed in about 12 years. So what this accreditation process does, it, it, it forces us to go through every policy and procedure and to meet the, uh, industry standard on, on all of our procedures. And, once we do that, uh, they come in with reviewers, and they determine whether or not we've met the standards that the, the Michigan State Police, the M.A.C.P. has established, and, uh, and, and that will be, again, a feather in our cap once we, uh, can become a, a state-accredited, uh, agency. Uh, along with that, in order to accomplish that, that's, that's, uh, it, it's going to cost about $2,700 for the accreditation process, and about $1,000 per year after that. Uh, the Power DMS is a software program that is, uh, it, it piggybacks onto the accreditation. This, essentially, is going to allow us to, uh, manage our records, it's going to, uh, document, uh, it's a document management software, it keep and track, uh, of all records, uh, documents and procedures, signature accountability, and several other tools that will allow us to track our policies as we go forward. Uh, patrol car printers, uh, again, this is, uh, something that's essential as well. Uh, the new technology, uh, our equipment is not kept up with the new technology, so we're proposing, uh, outfit all of our police vehicles with, uh, new printers. Uh, that's about $5,500. The last time we replaced them was in 2008. Uh, also on that slide, and I did tell, uh, Trustee George Shevitz, I was only going to have three slides, so I, hopefully, I, uh, keep it. Uh, the federal forfeiture, or, our, our forfeiture budget. Uh, I can't talk about it unless I tell you that we've become addicted to drug money, all right?
That's my line.
And, and we really have. We have become very dependent and rely, we rely so much on, on the drug forfeiture proceeds. Fortunately, we have the money to spend this year. Uh, it could go away next year. Uh, we, we may not make the seizures that we've had in previous years. So I always warn the board, uh, assume that we do not have any drug forfeiture money. If we don't have any drug forfeiture money, can we still operate? Uh, every year, we spend between $200,000, $300,000, $400,000 in drug forfeiture money, and, uh, the same is going to happen this year. Uh, we're going to come back in, next month, we have, uh, several capital items, uh, vehicles and a few other items, that we're going to present a budget, uh, our drug forfeiture budget, uh, to you, uh, I think, next month sometime, and that's when we'll talk about capital, uh, items that we need to purchase. But again, if we didn't have this drug forfeiture budget, we would be talking about it this evening, all right? So it's important to remember that. Our current budget balance is approximately $462,000. Uh, that would probably sustain us for maybe one more year if we don't ever seize any other drug money.
Are you, are you under a requirement to spend that money in a calendar year, or can you hang on to it?
They, they don't want you to save it, they want you to, uh, spend it in, in approximate, in about two years. Uh, but, a- again, it's not a hard and fast rule. They, they, they say they recommend that it be spent in, in two years.
Do you anticipate, if marijuana is, recreational marijuana is legalized, that the forfeiture account will go up because of the black market?
And, and, uh, Trustee Kermie and I, we spoke about this, I think you used the word unintended cons, or unintended consequences, I think, were your words. And, uh, in Colorado, I can tell you, once it was legalized, uh, it increased the illegal marijuana business, the black market business. If you think about it, why would, if, if I'm a legal marijuana distributor, I have to pay taxes, I have all these reporting requirements. If I can just grow this in my basement or my backyard and not pay taxes on it, uh, wouldn't it make more sense to do that? And that's what Colorado is finding out right now, is that there's more illegal drug activity since they legalized marijuana than before when it was illegal. Uh, so, a- again, it's a, uh, and to answer your question, yes, we'll be conducting investigations, and it'll probably lead to, uh, perhaps bigger and better seizures, or, or more forfeitures.
But isn't marijuana going to be, if it's legalized in Michigan, won't that come under, uh, LARA? It's, it'll be more of a regulatory function rather than a law enforcement criminal function?
It, it will still be a criminal aspect to it. The marijuana will be, come in from other states, there'll be illegal exporting marijuana from Michigan to other states. Uh, again, you have to remember that it's still going to be illegally federally, it's still going to, it's, it's still, uh, a Schedule I drug on the federal schedule. So, uh, we're gearing up to conduct criminal investigations at this time, even if it does become legal.
And where are we right now with the, all of the wreckage from the, from the previous administration and the, the audit of the drug forfeiture money? And, are we all straight now with the Department of Justice? Is the investigation closed? What's the status?
We are doing things correctly now, if, if that's a question. Um, we weren't before, obviously, and, uh, I think Cindy is still working with Plant Moran on, what, 2012, 2013 audit, uh, single audit? I'm sorry?
13 through 15.
13 through 15, and it's not easy to find records, uh, for, for those years. So we're still trying to figure it out, which we can't do.
I think the former clerk made sure of that.
There was quite a shredding party, I understand.
Yes, Steve.
Okay. Any, any questions on, on the police department, uh, before we move on to the, uh, communications?
So it sounds like you have no capital requests for the general fund. It's all coming out of drug forfeiture.
There, there's a few things that I've mentioned tonight. I, I think it totals less than, uh, $10,000 or $15,000.
Okay.
Uh, just the items that I mentioned. But it's also important, important to understand that, in order for us to drug, to use drug forfeiture funds, our budget has to increase every year. If, if, if I came to you and said, look, it, uh, we, you know, our budget decreased by 10%, and we used, uh, you know, the, the equivalent amount of drug forfeiture money, uh, we, we would not be able to do that.
That would be supplanting.
It would be supplanting. So, our budget has to increase, uh, and they don't give you a number about how much it has to increase, but, uh, we want to abide by the spirit of the law. We don't want to say, well, our budget's $1 more than it was last year, so that allowed us to use $400,000 in drug money. So, uh, we're, we're looking at that, and working with Cindy Kushner to make sure that, uh, you know, we have a substantial increase, or, at least, uh, something that would pass the, you know, the, the test if somebody, uh, did question it.
Well, inflation of wages, say, 2% or 2.5% in benefits, doesn't that automatically increase it?
You would think, but, but we've, we've had, we've had some vacancies in the department this year, and, and we, we need to see how it plays out at the end of the year. But, uh, uh, we're, we're very cognizant of the fact that, that the budget has to increase, increase in order for us to use drug forfeiture money. Okay. I'm going to switch to, uh, the communication center, and Lieutenant Brothers is, is here to answer any specific questions. Uh, as I mentioned, we promoted a, a Police Service Aid Supervisor, she just started about two weeks ago, and, uh, one of her jobs is, is to manage and, and operate the dispatch center more effectively and efficiently. Uh, one of the things that we would like to do, Bob, can you go to the next? One of the, uh, things that we'd like to do is, and we talked about it last year, we want to add that third dispatch center, uh, uh, radio console in our dispatch center to give us three dispatch centers, uh, three radios, so that the dispatchers can, uh, utilize during the day. But this will allow a, a couple of things. Uh, well, first of all, Chief Phillips is also writing a grant, or he's, uh, part of a grant on this, so possibly, it's going to be grant-funded. Uh, but this is going to give the supervisor the ability, in, in the event that it's real busy in there, she can go in and she could sit down at the third station, and she can monitor, she can dispatch, she can answer 911 calls. Uh, this will also play into our, the concept, the idea of, of utilizing our police service aides in a, in a larger capacity in, in order to, uh, to manage the front desk as well. What we envision is that there's going to be three dispatchers there, uh, perhaps on the days and afternoon shifts, and, uh, if I have three dispatchers, I want to make sure that they all have the ability to, to answer 911 calls and also to, to talk on the radio. Uh, the next slide, if you will. Uh, we're also proposing, we want to replace the furniture. Uh, the last time the furniture was replaced was in 2006. Uh, we replaced it with a three-year-old model furniture. It was new furniture, but the, the model had been out for three years. Uh, this furniture goes up and down, dispatchers can stand up, it's, it's motorized. Uh, but if you look at it and say, well, 2006, it wasn't that long ago, uh, but, you've got to remember, it's three shifts a day. This, this furniture's being used 24/7. So, you know, it probably has the dog years of 45 years, uh, if, if you do the math. And, and it's really time for us, not only to replace the furniture, uh, but when we do that, we're going to do a to- total makeover of, of the dispatch center, meaning clean, paint, uh, new carpet. Uh, we've had some issues, some, perhaps some health issues with our PSAs. Uh, we've had the ducks cleaned out there just recently, and, uh, a- again, you've got to remember, they're, they're in there 24/7, and, uh, we, I think we owe it to them to, to make it as, as clean and, and, and nicest as possible.
Uh, Chief, within that, back in 2014, we had the PSAs and the prisoners complaining about the HVAC being too cold in the winter. Has that been fixed, or we're just living with it? We were going to spend $65,000.
We're, we're living with it at, at this point.
Why don't we fix it?
Well, it's a pretty expensive fix.
At that time, it was $65,000.
And, and that was pretty expensive, and, and it, it's still, it's still an issue. I mean, we've been managing it, uh, primarily with, with heavier blankets, uh, but, uh, the fix that was proposed the last time wasn't going to guarantee that it was going to solve the problem in, in, in terms of the cross ventilation in there. So, we didn't really, uh, I, I wasn't really comfortable with what was being proposed. Um, at, at this point, we're not suggesting that it needs to be fixed. Uh, at some point, things may change. Uh, hopefully, it's not going to be a cold winter. Uh, the, the prisoners, we, we don't like to have a lot of repeat, you know, we don't want to make it too nice, but we don't want to freeze them to death either, but, uh, but, uh, we're, we're not bringing that forward at this point.
Can I ask a couple of questions about, um, equipment? I, I assume that keeping it up-to-date, fresh, clean and so forth helps with recruiting. It doesn't, um, turn somebody off that that's one of the reasons they want to go if they're dealing with an ancient work environment, so, is that right?
That is a good point, and, and, and again, they, you know, they spend a long time in there, and there's, there's, there's no windows, and they're staring at prison cells.
Yeah.
So.
Now, relating to that, there was a recent, uh, incident, uh, in a neighboring community with monitoring a, um, individual who was in the jail. I'm sure you're well familiar with that. Do we have procedures in place to make sure that wouldn't happen here?
Yes. The way that, that we're set up is, we have direct vision of, of our prisoners, meaning, and, and the, the agency that you're, you're discussing, a lot of these, uh, departments, the, the lockup is, is somewhere back in the, the corner of, of the police department, and the only way that you can visually see the prisoners is, is through CCTV. Uh, we're set up where we can, and, and we just replace all of our cameras, and, and, and we also have speakers and microphones in, in these cells. Uh, we also have, again, what I believe, uh, top-notch training, which means, if we had that situation, I would like to think that we would have called 911 immediately, and they would have transported that prisoner to the hospital. Uh, we err on the side of caution. If somebody, uh, if we have any inkling that somebody has ingested any type of drugs, they're going to the hospital, all right? They're going to get their stomach pumped, or they're going to get medically cleared. That's, that, that's our policy. We're not going to take any chances. And, I, I believe the, the officer was actually criminally charged in, in that community. So it's a, it's a good learning experience. Teaching.
Chief, I think it underscores, again, um, the, the fact that we don't have a, a maintenance budget for the police station, for dispatch, for our, for our fire department facilities. Uh, and that is something that we desperately need, because we cannot be doing this on a pay-as-you-go basis. Uh, this, these buildings are old, they, they do break down, they're used, as you pointed out, 24/7. Uh, they never clo, they haven't closed in 13 years, you know? Uh, so things break, and we don't have a, a plan in place to do the kind of maintenance that is, that is necessary. Um, the other thing I would, I hope that you have taken into consideration in this budget is, we now must, starting next year, comply with the Michigan Indigent Defense, uh, requirements from the state of Michigan. Now, I worked on that in Lansing, helped get that through the House, and one of the big sticking points was the fact that there was no money.
Right.
Uh, attached to that. So, it was, you know, it was an unfunded mandate, but.
Exactly.
Um, indigent defense is in the Constitution, so I, I would, I would argue that, um, it's something that we should have been doing anyway, and you can't really make that unfunded mandate argument. Now, I understand there's $84 million available, uh, from the state this year, but it has to go to all, all court jurisdictions throughout the state, and there's, I think, like a thousand. So, um, what I, uh, I, I know that there are other requirements, though, that police departments now are going to have to comply with, with respect to the.
Interview rooms.
The, the interview rooms, uh, kind of a, kind of a hotline that, uh, people are going to have to use between the, the accused and their attorney. The attorney's going to have to be more present in, in these proceedings. Now, I had heard, I don't know if it was from our guys, or, or maybe from the 35th District Court folks, that, uh, that there, that might even require a police officer Court folks, that it might even require a police officer to be present or nearby where that officer might as well be out in the field doing something. How does, is that correct? Is that a fair statement?
Present for what? I'm sorry, I don't understand.
At this point, the direction is not clear as to what the mandate is going to be by, so we did not budget for any improvements into our facility. At some point, we may come back. I expect that we would use drug forfeiture funds to create a private situation where the defendant can meet with his attorney. We still have to have the ability to monitor that person. Obviously, we can't listen to the conversation, but, you know, so there may be some minor modifications we're going to make in order to comply with that. But we're waiting to get the direction from the court, really, to see what we're going to be directed to do.
Because I'd be very concerned if we now have to essentially post an officer inside the building to keep an eye on somebody. I'd rather have that guy out on the street.
Right. I don't think it's going to be, it might be for an interview, a 20-minute interview. It might be our dispatcher. We may have cameras that the dispatchers are going to monitor. So we're uncertain as to exactly what our requirements are going to be at this point.
But there will be a cost.
There will be, there's always a cost.
This cost will be in Plymouth Township facility, or will it be at the court?
Both, actually. But there will be, there will have to be changes, physical changes made here. There will also be physical changes made at the court. Now, the court is, the 35th District Court is receiving $208,000 for next year for the implementation of the Indigent Defense recommendations. We don't get that money.
Right.
But they do, so.
Okay, any other questions?
Same question that I gave to Chief Phillips. What are you anticipating doing to stretch your resources and cooperate more on a regional basis? And also, a year ago, we were talking about a possibility of a dispatch consolidation somewhere in Western Wayne County. I don't know, is that dead?
It's still being talked about, and probably be talked about five years from now, and maybe 10 years from now. We thought we did have a partner that we were going to join into, that was going to come into our joint dispatch center. It made a lot of sense for that agency to do it, and it still may happen at some point, but politically, it's not going to happen this year. We're always looking. We have people in the Drug Enforcement Administration, we have people assigned to Western Wayne. That allows us to leverage our resources and to participate jointly with other agencies, thus saving us a lot of money. If we didn't have these partnerships, we probably would have to hire additional officers. I have the ability in an emergency, even beyond mutual aid, to have an investigative team here at a moment's notice. So we're always looking at ways to be more effective and, quite frankly, efficient.
Dispatch seems like the easiest thing to regionalize. Like, in the South, they use a much larger region for dispatch.
Well, you could dispatch from China. The problem is, the agencies still have prisoners. What do you do with the prisoners? If you have to have people monitoring the prisoners, which you do, you might as well dispatch. So that's always been the biggest problem, where the cost savings would not be there.
Okay. Any questions from the public? Excellent, thank you, Chief. Thanks for your service. All righty, let's move on to item G, Supervisor and Trustee Comments. I'll, I'm going to defer for a little bit. Bob, do you want to go?
Yeah.
Or do you want to defer too?
Pardon me?
Or do you want to defer too?
No, I'd like to actually make some comments about, in response to what that one resident said earlier tonight. I think unfortunately, my family falls under the category of no good deed goes unpunished, because we volunteer a lot. My daughter volunteers, she works five hours a week at church. My wife volunteers for all kinds of things. My wife and I ran the picnic for a couple of years. We spent hundreds of hours. When I was first on the board, I was like Gary, I was at everything. And my family, you know, kind of gets, sometimes, if you volunteer for stuff, you get attacked. And unfortunately, that's become a symptom in our community. I don't think that speaker understood what the concept of a conflict of interest is. That is true, that I was actually one of the founders of Park, and I served as general counsel for two years. I resigned off the board there in 2016, haven't been involved in it at all in over two years. But everything I did was for free. Actually, I paid, because I donated money in addition to work there for free. I never earned a dime. My wife worked there part-time for a short while. She made an average, we figured that she made, on average, about $10 an hour was about what she got paid. So a park worker at Township Park actually gets, she didn't do it for the money, she did it because they needed some help in the office. Most of what she was doing was volunteer. Unfortunately, some of the members in this community really don't understand the concept of volunteerism. All they really like to do is attack people. So what they did to my family, which was unconscionable about six months ago, if you recall, was they did a robo-call. And the robo-call said, if you're against taxes, press 1, high taxes. And they pressed 1, and it rang my home phone. And they harassed my, they harassed my kids. That's who these people are, so just keep that in mind. Sometimes, what I think is really disappointing in this community is the people that are volunteering to try to make this a better place are getting attacked, and I think that's really taken this community down to a level that none of us should find acceptable. Thank you.
Gary Heitman.
Gary.
Well, I'm upset with the defacing and removing of public service millage signs. That has started this week. We saw some with, you know, the vote no on everything, but when you start attacking the public service millage directly and start removing those signs and defacing those signs, I got a problem. I ran with the idea that public safety is number one here, and we're trying to keep it number one here. And damn it, if you guys got a problem, show up here and talk to us. Don't be hiding behind somebody else stealing the signs.
Okay. Jerry Vorba.
I just wanted to give a notice on the election. We've sent out about 4,700 absentee ballots right now, and we're processing more every day. So it looks like there's going to be kind of a banner turnout. And so I encourage, again, anyone who can get an absentee ballot should do that, because the lines will be long, there is no straight ticket voting, there's going to be six issues you'll have to read about on the ballot, and then, of course, the judges and all the other offices. So please come to the voting booths prepared, and there's sample ballots that are online. You can get sample ballots here, so be prepared if you're going to go to the polls. If not, do get an absentee ballot.
And the last day for absentee is?
Is going to be, you can get one on Monday, but you have to, you can't leave the building. The last time you can get one mailed is on Saturday, and the Saturday before the election, we are open from 8 till 2, and that's by statute.
And also, if you're 60 and over, can you, do you basically automatically qualify for an absentee ballot?
You automatically qualify, but you still have to request it, so.
You still have to request it.
Just get a request form from us, you can call us, we'll get one in the mail to you, come in and pick one up, and we can process it right away, and then put you on the permanent list to receive an absentee ballot request form for each election.
Okay, great. Because that's so important with, we are expecting a very high turnout, and with the fact that the, there is no straight party ticket voting this year, people are going to be spending a lot more time at the polls, plus we have the new machines, which are different, and that's just going to add to the time in line. So if you can get an absentee ballot, if you qualify for one, then we would encourage you to use it. So you can take it home, go over it, and take your time on it, mail it in, and avoid the lines.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm all set for tonight.
Okay. Jack Dempsey. Chuck Kermey.
Cindy, when may I come in and talk to you about some of the capital improvement items in the budget for the park? To clarify that you have the estimates, I think Mark Lewis was getting estimates for roofs and things like that?
I talked to him and Eric this week. I'm hoping that by the end of this week, I will have the gutter estimates, so I don't have all of them yet. So I would say maybe the end of next week would be better.
Okay. Cool. All set?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to thank everybody again tonight for the very good discussion that we had regarding the future of Hilltop. This is clearly an issue that's not resolved yet. We're looking at all the options. As I said, we're following several different paths. But the one thing I do want to mention is that throughout this entire discussion, we have been emphasizing the fact that this is public space, and that the golf course is going to be preserved for green space, for public recreation, whether that's golf or dog parks or soccer fields. It is certainly, I think it's the intent of this board that we would like to keep it that way. I frequently read things to the contrary, thanks to social media, which would indicate otherwise. And I think what we have to main, always remember is that we're looking to preserve this as public space. We also have a serious funding issue, because all of these things that we looked at tonight have a price tag attached to them. And as I mentioned, the elephant in the room is that we have no way of financing many of these improvements, as worthy as many of them might be. So again, folks, do your homework. Don't believe everything you read in social media, it's usually wrong, and it's often rather nasty as well. So that being said, I also want to point out that what we saw tonight was some of the diversity that we see in our arts and cultural community. We are really a center for arts and culture in Western Wayne County, and I think what we saw tonight is the fact that we've got many different groups working together, and that is both here with the Arts Council, with Park. You know, we had, people want a swimming pool, we've got one. We've got a swimming pool at Park. We've got senior programs at Park. We've got theaters, we've got youth programs. And what we can do is marry those existing outstanding services that are provided elsewhere with other opportunities, sculpture, walking paths, things like that, that are also contribute to the arts and cultural community. So they're not mutually exclusive, they're complementary, so I just want to make that clear, that all of this should be integrated and working together as we combine our recreation, arts, and cultural resources. So that being said, public comments and questions is item H. Anybody interested in saying anything? Very good, otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Supervisor, I move we adjourn.
Motion's made by trustee Heitman to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Vorba. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.